From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 28, 2017, meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We're going to begin today's meeting with the flag salute, and that is going to be led by Nancy Lawson, our Assistant CIO over Budget and Finance. And if you could please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Please stand. Salute, pledge.
Thank you, please be seated. Well, welcome to everyone. Our agendas are located on the tables at the back of the chambers, if you would like to follow along. And we're going to begin with our very short consent agenda. All items listed with a CA above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So at this time, I will read the consent agenda item, and that is on page two of our agenda, item number one. Are there any members of the audience that would like to make a comment on item one? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board and request a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion of second, please cast your votes.
Please confirm your vote. Oh, did I catch it? I didn't catch it. Supervisor Perez, your vote is not going? So your voice vote is?
Yes.
Thank you. All ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is item two on the agenda, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. And so at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone that would like to make a public presentation on any item that's not on our agenda. Please come forward. How many do we have? Just the one? Two, three, okay, four. Okay, so these are not related to the budget, right? All the public presentation, okay, great. Come forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Scrivner, gentlemen, Ms. Perez. Wow, you guys have a full house this evening. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Nadine Escalante, I'm here to discuss the police cams and the independent review board. I was here last Tuesday, and as I said, I will be coming on a regular basis, sorry, steps down here, it takes a lot of breath, on a regular basis to discuss this. So I came on Tuesday, I brought to your attention a complaint that I have filed with the Sheriff's Department as well as District Attorney's Office regarding one of your deputies, Jesus Cabral, who is still on duty, which I find it very ironic if you're in an investigation, why are you still policing our streets? So I saw him Thursday with two other deputies harassing a homeless man. I videotaped it, it's on my Facebook. When I worked for probation, as I brought up here, Mr. T.R. Miracle is the chief. When I was under probation, when I worked under probation, we were expected to abide by the rules that the county imposed, and if we didn't abide by the rules, we were disciplined. I don't understand why we are holding our Sheriff's Department to a different kind of standard. As I stated last Tuesday when I was here, Mr. Miracle had to participate, had to participate in an IA investigation against me. I can tell by his body language, he was not comfortable due to county politics. It is time to stop with the county politics, it's time to start remembering, and God we trust, it's time to start remembering that we live under God's rule, and you guys are abiding by God's rule, like I said last Tuesday. We should not be having a deputy who is under review for harassing me, stalking me, and he's harassing homeless people. That's absurd, and this is why it's very urgent that we have police cams and independent review. His peers have reviewed him and said, "You haven't done anything wrong to Ms. Escalante." If he had a camera on him, he wouldn't be able to still be continuing this crazy behavior. Mr. Cabral was under my supervision when I worked at probation. He was extra help. We did not want him as permanent staff because he lacked safety and security measures. However, we have him as a sheriff working our streets with a badge and a gun. So I just wanted to say, I very apologize to Mr. Miracle. I think he's doing a great job, and that's the standard that we need to be setting for all of our departments. We need to have educated people with good rapport and good staffing skills to be bringing good staff up to par, and those who cannot get it together need to take a step back so we can have the right people working. And I do remember, Mr. Scrivner, you did ask Mr. Nations to contact me, and I have not heard back from him. Again, this is calling our county to be responsible. I pay my taxes to you, my taxes are paying for your children, your education, your children's education, your car payments, your house payment. I expect to be hurt, and I expect my children to be hurt.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Oh, yes, good evening. Name is Curtis James Bingham, Sr., street evangelist for our Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ, who truly is the only begotten Son of a holy heavenly Father, God Almighty. I just wanted to come in and first of all, the Lord tells us to honor our leaders, and this is one of the most honorable positions here in the city, so I pray God continue to bless you. And then I also would like to take this time to thank you for allowing us to come up and have our say, and it really, really just shows why the Lord has you in the position you are in to let the common man come and have a say. And I just wanted to say, if I was to greet or bless you with anything or anybody else, you know, it would be to thank you for what you do and all the cases that come up. And the second greatest gift I would give anybody here in this room, it would be law enforcement, because without them, we can't do anything. I'm a street evangelist, but I wouldn't be one if we didn't have law enforcement. I'm looking at our beautiful supervisors, the chairman, you wouldn't be one if it wasn't for law enforcement. No bakery, car shop, or bank, anything could open up if it wasn't for law enforcement. Everybody here in this building right now know that we got to have law enforcement. So they always got to be put first when we're trying to keep our city going and keep it positive, because we sleep at nighttime, we worry about cars, worry about our kids. Women are carrying purses and lessons because people got their eyes on them. You know, the Lord says, "One person can destroy much good," and it's very, very evil out there in a big-time way, and if it wasn't for law enforcement, none of us could do anything. If something was to happen right now, somebody got out of order, yelled something out, we'd all get ready to run, but that officer over there, he ready to put his life on the line right now to keep us safe in there. So I just want everyone to recognize how important it is and what we do in our city. Law enforcement is going to have to be put first all the time, and when you go into the jails, you get murderers going there, right? Why it's so tricky in there? Because you got some people that didn't murder, but when they get locked in that system, they become mad, and the only one they want to take their anger out on is those that work inside there. So you have silent murderers too, because they ready to murder somebody, and it's usually the ones that work there that have done nothing to them, they just angry because they're there. So the Lord would have us who's over law enforcement, so all of us respect them to the uttermost, to the highest, and do everything that we can to bless them and get them everything that they need, because without them, there's nothing we could do. You know, nothing would be opened up. Everybody here me speaking right now know this is the truth. Everybody here know we got to have law enforcement out there because there's criminals everywhere. So I just wanted to come in and say that, and thank you for allowing me to come in and speak, and I just try to come in for the Lord and speak as we have me to, and it's usually for all of us. And thank you, because I'm your servant, and all of us is really your servants, and we thank you for what you're doing, keeping the city going, and we pray that the Lord bless your districts, because your district wouldn't be safe without law enforcement. So this is the true thing, you know, this ain't a favoritism thing. We have to have them, and we need to get them everything they want first and foremost before we do anything else. Name our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Thank you, Honorable Chairman and Honorable Board.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Please come forward. If you could start making your way down, if you're planning on speaking, that would help us to move along.
Hello, thank you. I wanted to make this really brief. I spend about three to five hours every single day on the streets talking to individuals about what they care about, what they're concerned about, what they think are the problems in this area, and what are the solutions. Just general canvassing, and above all, it mostly reported is concern with police brutality, is concern with the way our police departments operate and other law enforcement agencies operate, and overwhelmingly, there is a very large amount of interest in having body cameras for our police. We know all the things that can produce, it allows us to hold our police more accountable, collect more evidence on problems that they see, but additionally, I think it would give a lot of people out here hope that their governing agencies, their governing bodies respect their desires, and so I look forward to working with all of you moving forward on implementing this. Thank you.
Would you give us your name for the record, please?
Brandon Hudsby.
Thank you. Hudsby, Hudsby. Hudsby.
Buenas noches, Lupe Martinez. Vivo en Delano, y quería avisarles, verdad, de que una vez más estamos en la misma situación. Tenemos mucha gente que habla español solamente, y no tenemos intérpretes. Espero que ustedes traten con ese asunto. Tenemos más gente que va a venir, y no van a tener intérprete, quieren participar.
Thank you. I don't know if we have someone who can interpret here, Madam Clerk? Or did he say?
Would Mr. Martinez like to interpret for us?
Yeah. Uh, Lupe Martinez. His name is Lupe Martinez. He's coming from Delano, and one of the reasons he's here today is stating the fact that there's not enough people that speak Spanish, and they're still having the same problem. They're not able to communicate because most of them speak Spanish. So why are you guys willing to do about that issue?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hudsby. Thank you.
Thank you.
He'll be next, please.
Hello, my name is Sisus Mendoza, and I would just like to be on, you know, to be on the record, obviously, it's a concern with law enforcement, not having enough deputies out in our districts, especially District Number Four. There's change that needs to happen, and I just want it to be on the record, what are we going to do about it? The problem is there, it should be our priority in all our districts and in the county, and I'm here, and I'm pretty sure there's a lot of people here that are willing to work with you guys in working on this problem to have some kind of solution. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can you give, sir?
Could I ask you a question? Is there a specific area of District Four that you're referring to?
Yes, in the Frito-Lay area.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you. He'll be next, please. Next speaker, please. Do we have any others?
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your time. My name is Michael Ochoa, O-C-H-O-A. I work for the Department of Human Services as a human services disabilities advocate, and I just wanted to briefly bring to your attention that some of my thoughts and observations. My position is the only position with the department. It's such that I help the community, that those people that apply for our services might benefit from greater benefits from Social Security Department. At any time, for example, and these are just numbers of my own over the years, working with the clients, these are numbers of Social Security awards where the clients have come off of our roles and gone on to the federal roles. Some of them are interim assistance that was recouped, which means we received our money back, we were paid back, but it also includes those that were just straight Social Security recipients. In 2014, I recouped retroactive benefits in the amount of $43,600. In 2015, $44,851. In 2016, it jumped to $84,979. Currently, I'm at $34,318. I used to work with a dedicated clerk that would help support me in collecting benefits from these people, helping them get approved for Social Security benefits. I am back doing the job myself. I create the folders, I create the forms, I send out the letters. Mine is probably along the same line as human service technicians, where we have plenty of work, not enough time to do all of it. In my particular case, I believe that we would be able to collect more money for the county, reimburse the county, and we'd be able to get these individuals off of the county roles and on to federal benefits. That would save us money in the long run. I think that would be a good benefit if we had more individuals to help out in that area. I thank you for your time. I know it's a, I've really enjoyed working here 23 years with the county. I enjoy to continue, I look forward to working longer years with the county, but we really need the help. It helps with morale, it helps with integrity for the individual, for the program, and it helps our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hudsby. Do we have any other public presentations?
Good afternoon. My name's Angie, A-N-G-E-E-S Farza. I work for the Department of Human Services. September 10, 2001 was my first day, so my second day was not very good, but it was a memorable one. I've been with the county, like I said, going on 17 years. I started as a clerk, receptionist. Before that, I was on welfare, on aid, because I had two children that needed that. Once I got working, guess what? Done. After becoming a clerk, I became a human service technician. I'm a number three, the top that you have and you offer to the county. I do my best for the clients every day. They come in, I give them the best and utmost quality and customer service I can provide. I, as a child, was working on the fields. I, as a child, learned to appreciate what life gives me, and I apologize because I'm the loudest one in my unit, so as you can tell, I am the loud one. I am here to tell you that I appreciate my job. It's a stable job because I know many people need my assistance, appreciate my assistance because I do for them everything I possibly can. Now, I'm not asking anything or any of us, I know that. I'm just saying that what I do, I feel blessed, blessed to give them an assistance that they so deserve. As a human service technician, I see everything. I've done general assistance, homeless assistance, cash aid, food stamps, medical, name it, I pretty much have done it. Confidential, healthy families, everything the county has offered, I have pretty much assisted or been in on it myself. So I do not walk the path. It was not created, it was shown to me by others before me. All I say in my own two cents and everything that I can possibly say is that I love my job. I love what I do for my clients, and everybody that's around me knows it, because they know that I do everything possible in my hands to help those clients. When I went on home calls doing general assistance, I saw things I wish I didn't have to see. I ran as fast as I could because there are dogs always around me, but I did the best I possibly could do for my clientele. And I'm a mother of five, not of two, of five, and I show my children, learn from me, do not as I do, but learn as I do. So again, I'm here only to tell you that I appreciate my job. I'm not saying I'm the greatest worker, I'm just saying that I am united by great workers, supervisors above us. They show, they show me what I want, which is great leadership, great unity, and I love that about them. I love DHS. I can go anywhere, I can do anything, but I prefer to stay here. Been here in 17, hopefully 25, and in the name of grace, I shall do it, but only God will tell. And I ask you, as I ask my children, don't show me, don't tell me, show me, I beg of you, because like I said, I'm a mother and a grandmother, and I'm proud of it. I'm so proud of it, but I've also been on that side. And unity is power, so please, please hear us, I beg of you, and know that we're all blessed today and always, especially we make positive action, not for us, but for those around us, because one day, they will help those we love. So thank you, and have a blessed day.
Thank you. Do we, do we have any other speakers? Okay, going once, okay, seeing none? All right, thank you. We'll move on then to board member announcements or reports. Do we have any board member announcements or reports?
Yes.
Did you want to, okay, please come forward. Is there anybody else? Is this, will this be our last speaker? We have another one here. If you could start making your way up, thank you. Ma'am, please proceed.
Okay. Sorry for my tardiness, I just got off work. Board members, I am the face of Kern County. My name is Laura Nellis. I work for Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. For those who don't know our new name, we are Kern County Mental Health. We serve adults and children in need. We don't just sit in offices, we are out there in the community to help children, families, and individuals. We are in the homes, homeless shelters, on the streets, schools, hospitals, jails, juvenile hall. We often work alongside DHS, my colleagues out here, probation, VPD, Sheriff's Department, hospital staff, the courts, and county agencies and community partners. We are Kern County, your constituency. We save and change lives. I work at Children's Outpatient. I have a caseload, have had caseloads as high as 90, and others have similar high caseloads. I spend a good amount of time putting out fires, that's all, I couldn't do much more. Talk about stress and burnout, and then come home to your own family and worry about how you're going to make it to the next paycheck? I currently have a specialized caseload. I work with probation youth, some who are court-ordered with various symptoms and behavioral difficulties, such as anger, depression, and substance abuse, and sex offenses. My clients reside predominantly in Bakersfield and the surrounding area, but I also have clients throughout Kern County. Imagine, if you will, the impact to our clients and the community if the services we provide didn't exist, were reduced or took days, weeks, months before an individual could be seen. Think about it, those lives we save and change every day. I haven't even mentioned the cost in dollars. Think about it. I and my colleagues are tired and frustrated. I've worked for the county for 17 years and haven't had a raise in 10. That's half of my career. I can't tighten my belt any further. It has been a struggle for me and my children, as well as my parents, who I help care for. They survived the Depression and World War II, which I sometimes feels like happening now. They taught me some life skills that has helped me along the way, but the cost of living keeps going up, while my pay has remained the same for a decade, a decade. It's shameless, it really is, but we, the workhorses, we're beginning to fill our oats, and we stand here and demand a fair contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Arthur Rodriguez. I'm from Delano. I worked for Nestle for almost 30 years, and I have seen, this board has listened to us. I go to the city council meetings in Delano, and they will not listen to the people, they just go ahead and vote whatever they want, they don't let the people ask them if they want a yes or a no, but this is the only board I have seen that listens to the people, and you guys do a great job, I think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come back. He'll be next, please. Do we have any other speakers? Please come forward. Yeah. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Trina Brown, and I'm with the Department of Human Services. I work for Child Protective Services. For 12 years of my career, I was a child abuse investigator. Now I work for voluntary family maintenance, and when they're inundated, I pick up extra referrals here and there. I can't tell you how many times that I've come this close to quitting my job because I just can't do it anymore. At this point in time, I am coming back and forth from Weldon, California, your district, Nick, to work in this job here. Today, I just went and had my ears checked. I was to be fitted for hearing aids. Do you know that our insurance does not pay for hearing aids? And for me to hear is going to cost me $4,000. I have 35% hearing in this ear and less than 50% in this hearing, and it's going to cost me $4,000. That's like a whole lot more than pulling in that belt. We definitely need a raise. It has been 10 years.
Please come forward.
My name is Julie Otero, and I'm normally advocate for healthcare, but today I just wanted to ask a question, actually. I'm wondering, I see all these wonderful people, working people, people like myself. I get up at 2:00 in the morning, I work every day, and I wonder, maybe on your budget here, maybe if you guys start paying all those lawsuits for police brutality, maybe you have enough money in your budget to pay these working people. I'm sure that they were appreciated and the money would be mostly...
If I may interrupt you, we're not able to pick up the speaker when you all are applauding, so they're telling us that they can't hear, so if you could at least allow them to speak.
Thank you.
And before you do your applause, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to, my question to you guys was, maybe, maybe in your budget, when you guys are making the decisions, you see all these wonderful people that actually care about each other and their community, because they're standing here, they're here trying to listen in and trying to be supportive for one another. This is working people. Maybe we start paying the police officers brutality and shushing people with the money, maybe they'll have enough money in the budget to pay their salary they have been waiting for 10 years to get. Is there any way possible that this can happen? And that's my question to all of you, as you make this decision today. I wonder, when was the last time that you really had to think about a raise, or it just automatically happens for you guys, but it hasn't happened for these people for many years, and I believe they deserve it because they're hard-working people, and that's my statement today. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do we have any other speakers? Ma'am, we can't, we can't hear you. If you'd, if you'd like to say something, please come forward.
Is there going to be another chance to speak to the budget itself?
Yes, yes, we're, we're going to, we're going through public presentations, and this, this portion is for folks that have comments on what is not on the agenda. And so as soon as we get through this, we're going to go on to the budget. Thank you. Any other public presentations? Okay, I don't see any hands. Okay, so we're going to move then on to board member announcements or reports. I don't believe we had any? No, okay, very well. Then here we are with item number four on our agenda. This is under the County Administrative Office. Public meeting to receive public comment on fiscal year 2017, 2018, recommended budget. And so I'm going to turn to Ryan Alsop, our County Administrative Officer, to start us off. Mr. Alsop, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and welcome to everybody that's here in the audience. With your approval, Mr. Chairman, as part of my office's presentation tonight, I'd like to see if we can have Mr. Lifquist, our assessor, come forward and, and provide some remarks on oil markets and price projections. If he's, thank, thank you. Appreciate that, John.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Alsop. Mr. Lifquist, welcome. We look forward to your perspective.
Chairman Scrivner, members of the board. This is not the date that we value oil, but this is the date that you make decisions. So I was asked to come and give our perspective as what's going on right now. So I brought three graphs here. One is the current, the spot price for crude oil. We do not use the spot price to, to value oil, but you can see from the graph what's been going on in history. July 2014 was when the oil price took the, took a huge nosedive. Went down to about $25 a barrel in, I think it was January of 2016. It's been climbing since then, reached about $50 a barrel, and now it's, it's dropping slightly, but holding relatively steady. The next slide, please. So this is what we actually, the numbers that we actually use to value oil every year, we, we value as of January 1st. We don't use the spot price, we use the futures market. And you can see that we went to a low in January 2016. The futures market at that time was $35 a barrel. Last year, or the current year, excuse me, 2000, January 2016, we were at, January 2017, we were at $50 a barrel. We don't value today, but if, I asked my staff if they were to put a price on oil today, we're at about $45, and the futures market shows a slight decline. So it's a somewhat pessimistic market. And the final slide. So I was asked to give a, an idea of what reserves look like. Unfortunately, that is confidential information, but reserves are relatively, are reflected relatively well, well in production. So this is oil production in the last 31 years from the 1987 year to current year. You can see that it's a, you could draw a line there, and it, it never deviates a great deal. There's a spike in, in production when the Elk Hills field went from the federal government to private hands. And the latest spike is when oil went from about $25 a barrel to 100, over $100 a barrel, and production went up substantially. Other than that, oil production is on a relatively consistent decline curve.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for Mr. Lifquist?
I do.
Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. Thank you, John. Is this the same estimation that you made? You were here not that long ago, and you and I had a brief interchange. Seems like this is worse than a month or two ago.
Nothing has really changed much in that time period, no.
Okay.
We're, we're pretty consistent, about $45 a barrel right now.
But we're set at 50 for our accounting purposes.
We were set at 50 for the, for the current tax year. We, and we haven't, we, we will not establish the numbers for next tax year until January.
But you anticipate them to be closer to 45 or 50?
If we were to value today, it would be closer to 45.
So is the dollar amount where new production pencils out still 68 bucks? The dollar amount per, per a barrel that justifies new production, is that still $68, roughly?
That just, oh, that justifies a new investment?
Mm-hmm, yes.
If, if I gave you those numbers, it was something that, that has fled my mind right now.
Oh, okay, we did, last time you said, what does it take to justify new production? You said around $68, and that we hadn't had any new production in two years.
That's correct. We, we have not had any, any new investment in, in production.
Okay. And so January will be the time in which you said either 45, 50, or some other number, should something else change?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lifquist. Appreciate it. Appreciate your, your input. Thank you for, for being here tonight. Mr. Alsop?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lifquist. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, aided by increased property tax revenue and ongoing countywide mitigation strategies, the county's structural budget deficit in the general fund stands at $19.8 million. The FIRE fund also has a budget deficit of $8.5 million. Both general and FIRE funds are balanced with a combination of spending reductions, use of one-time fund balance carryforward, and minimal use of reserves. Both funds prioritize critical countywide strategic objectives. Our approach to budgeting over the next few years will be guided by the countywide initiative Launch Kern. This initiative focuses in part on the work that we do as a county, as a county family, all departments, toward achievement of three basic countywide objectives. Enhance the quality of life of the residents that we serve. Become a model of excellence in managing our business and our people. Foster a culture of innovation. Continuity toward the achievement of countywide objectives is bolstered through three-year business plans that have been done by every department. These business plans demonstrate how strategies are being deployed in each of our unique business areas, our departments, that advance not only shared countywide objectives, but also the fiscal mitigation measure, measures mandated by your board to address the county's fiscal crisis. Of course, as you know, part of this overall initiative is the countywide implementation of Lean Six Sigma and applying this business practice to the thinking we do, the planning we do, the decisions we're making. Lean Six Sigma is a frame of mind, as much as, as it is a strategy for process improvement, and it will help us become better and faster at all that we do. Want to just reiterate some of the things that were just said by Mr. Lifquist, and I'll be more pointed, that there are all indications of everything that my staff and I have looked at in our, in our conversations with, with the assessor's office as well and others, that are forcing us to plan conservatively for the price of oil to remain basically flat for, for the foreseeable future. There, there's a quote there from Mr. Lifquist, and I want to point out, too, another consideration that we have to make is for Sacramento and Washington DC. We are a general law county. So all of the changes that are happening in Sacramento impact, policy changes impact us here in Kern County. The governor, as you can see there, is concerned about a recession, and the state budget, the May revision that they came out with, he is talking a, a lot about a certain recession that's coming. And when there is a recession, the state suffers, and they make decisions that pass costs on to locals and other things. There was a lot of that done to counties in 2009, 2010. So these are concerns of ours, they're just a few, there are many others. But these are guiding our planning. We're trying to be smart and measured, considerate about how we plan for this county's future. Like to point out the chart before you and what this is. This is a chart of the last eight fiscal years, starting in 2009, 10, and ending here in 16, 17. The bottom row is in the millions, and it shows the growth in county costs paid toward county employees' salaries. So that bar, which is, I don't even know what color, it looks like it's white, I guess, to the audience at the bottom, represents the amount of money that the county pays out countywide to all units for salaries. That has, from 2009 until 16, 17, increased 9%. Want to draw your attention before I go on further to the blue box down in the right-hand corner, which shows you inflation, Consumer Price Index, that's the average. Inflation has gone up over that same period of time, almost 12%. So you can see that inflation and CPI has outpaced the, the growth in the amount of money being provided to both, to all of our employees, both general and non-general fund. I'd like to point your attention to the next bar, it's the orange. That represents the amount of money the county is paying out in retirement costs for employees. That has grown by 67%, over 67%, almost 68, over the last eight fiscal years. $100 million countywide. The top bar, which is the gray, represents the amount of money that the county is paying out in millions toward employee healthcare. Those costs have increased by almost 17% over the last eight fiscal years. This chart is important because it is a compounding factor and difficulty in managing our budget situation. This is completely separate and apart from our structural budget deficit, which stands at 20, nearly $28 million. That, this is, what, what this shows you is while employee salaries have not, employees haven't been given a COLA, some employees out here have not been given an increase for quite some time. And that's not lost on us, and I, I believe, and I think all of you believe that that's part of doing business. We're in extraordinary times, however. But a complicating factor to making that happen for our employees is the amount of money that is being required, required for benefits. These are the real numbers, and this, this is how benefits have gone up and how much money, county money has been paid out over the past eight fiscal years. So I'll move on from this chart, and I'm happy to answer questions on it if you have any.
Any questions from the board? Please proceed.
Recommended budget before you today for fiscal year 17, 18 embodies several successes, including strengthening public safety efficacy, funding a new sheriff's academy for the second year in a row, funding the opening of a new inmate mental health and rehab facility, funding all 618 authorized positions in the FIRE department, maintaining library hours and programs, supporting spay and neuter services for animal services, funding major maintenance and infrastructure projects countywide, designating funding for park capital improvement, addressing future pension escalation costs, reducing the overall structural deficit and relying far less on one-time reserves for ongoing operations than was anticipated at this time last year. This budget utilizes $12 million less in county reserves than was planned at this time last year, as I'd like to emphasize, which is another hole that we don't want to dig out of when we get to a point where we're ahead with the structural budget deficit, which is the point. Along with increases in property related revenue, the board's fiscal mitigation plan has now resolved more than 50% of the county's original structural deficit. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the county continues to battle a large structural deficit. The price of oil is predicted to remain flat for some time. While the county is currently on a path to address its fiscal crisis, over the next three years, we have a long way to go to fiscal health and sustainability. Much more work is to be done. We are planning and implementing structural change for the long term. We're going to continue to implement your board's fiscal mitigation plan over the next three years. We're going to have a collective focus on countywide objectives and business plan execution. We're going to count on the leadership of our departments, our department heads and our employees to continue the hard work and the team effort to address our fiscal situation. We're going to seek ongoing reductions in expenses. We are not going to focus on finding one-time savings. Our focus will be on finding savings that's year after year, that's real savings that we can apply toward the budget deficit. We're going to continue with our restricted hiring policy and be thoughtful about how we do that. We're going to provide opportunities for employees. Through this process, since January, we have moved 60 county employees from general fund positions into non-general fund positions. We're providing opportunities for employees to promote from a hiring-from-within initiative. Should all be getting emails that are announcing positions that are open. In other words, we're not going outside to hire up, we're, we're, where appropriate, where we have promotional opportunities, where we have advancement opportunities, we're making sure that that is done by county employees first, and we're hoping through that process, we're going to save a little money over the long term. Contractual arrangements, we're going to be looking at all of them for options going forward. Healthcare financing, we're going to find savings in our healthcare financing. Partnership with labor, we're going to be talking with all of our labor groups going forward, several of our labor contracts are up or coming up, and we're going into all of these in the hopes of finding some common ground where we can and partnering, understanding that the numbers are the numbers. Management, management didn't create the economy that we're currently in, that it is what it is, but with the understanding that management understands a lot of the concerns that are being expressed by these folks out here today, and I've heard them in other meetings and other interactions I've had. And lastly, and most importantly, all of this, what does all of this mean? It means a healthier, more sustainable county, being in a fiscal position, a financial situation where we're able to do some things for you all. And we're going to continue avoiding layoffs and avoiding critical gouges into critical services you're all providing. That's our plan, that's what this is all about. And, members of the board, I'd like to turn this over to Nancy to talk about a few more details. Nancy Lawson, I'm sorry, our Assistant CAO for Budget and Finance.
Ms. Lawson, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The total county budget for fiscal year 2017, 18 is $2.6 billion. The general fund budget that funds most of the county operations is $817 million, a decrease of $28.4 million from last fiscal year. The general fund is balanced, despite a structural deficit of $19.8 million. The deficit is being resolved in part by a 3.5% or $9.7 million reduction in net county cost spending. The remaining deficit is covered by the use of $10.1 million in one-time fund balance carryforward. Additional property tax revenue, as a result of higher assessed values, not only for oil and gas, but also residential, commercial, and agricultural properties, is also contributing to the reduced deficit. The net fund balance carryforward from 16, 17 for the general fund was approximately $28.1 million and was allocated to one-time projects and reserved for future use. You may recall that no allocation of general fund resources were used last year to maintain critical county infrastructure. Therefore, $5 million has been allocated to major maintenance projects throughout the county. To address potential enhancements and repair of county parks, $2 million has been designated for parks' capital infrastructure. The remaining balance of $21.1 million is recommended for future pension cost escalation that is anticipated in fiscal year 18, 19, related to the actuarial assumption changes imposed by the Kern County Employees Retirement Association Board. The pension increase for the general fund and FIRE fund combined is estimated at, at $13 million annually. This full amount was initially scheduled to begin in fiscal year 18, 19, however, the retirement board... however, the retirement board, uh, is now allowing a three-year phase-in of those increases. The retirement designation would temporarily alleviate the concern of funding the pension increase, at the same time, departments are making ongoing reductions to mitigate the structural deficits. This also covers the fire fund. The assessors' final net assessed value roll is ninety-point-six billion dollars, which is an increase of five-point-one-six million, billion dollars, or six percent from fiscal year sixteen seventeen. The final assessment roll resulted in fifteen-point-nine million dollar increase related, uh, to property revenue for the general fund from last fiscal year. The increased revenue is helping to offset five million dollars in declines in other revenue sources, fund six-point-two million dollars in additional costs related to opening of the new jail for correctional medicine and the utility charges, and eliminates the use of four-point-seven million dollars, uh, intended for reserves for ongoing operations. The fire fund's property tax revenue estimated has increased about nine-hundred thousand, which will reduce the one-time fund balance carryforward they were originally needing to balance their budget. The general fund ended the fiscal year with a total of a hundred-and-forty-one-point-six million dollars in reserves and designations. The fiscal year seventeen eighteen recommended budget includes minimal reductions in reserves of three-point-nine-eight-eight million associated to the fire fund for its contribution for pension escalation. Reserves are increasing for tax litigation, IT projects, road improvements, and the future retirement cost increases. The changes in reserves proposed result in an ending total balance in reserves of a hundred-and-sixty-four million dollars. Since last year, departments have achieved eight-point-five percent in net general fund cost reductions as part of the mitigation plan. The estimated NGFC reductions needed for the final two years of the plan are expected to be at least two-and-a-half percent each year, depending on the future revenue and expenses identified. The general fund is on target to meet the deficit mitigation plan. The fire fund budget is balanced and totals a hundred-and-forty-two million dollars. The deficit for this fund is eight-point-five million dollars, which is about half of what it was last year. The fire department's budget fully funds six-hundred-and-eighteen positions. The recommended budget includes, as indicated, about four million dollars from the, for net county costs associated to pension cost. A concerted effort has been made by the county to proactively address budget deficits for the general fund and the fire fund since last fiscal year. This graph shows the change in the deficit and reserve use for the four-year fiscal deficit mitigation plan approved by your board last year. The solid lines reflect last year's projections and the segmented lines reflect the updated projections based on more current information. The top two lines show the deficit change. You may recall, we started with a forty-four-point-five million dollar deficit in sixteen seventeen and originally anticipated that that would decline to about thirty-six million dollars for, for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. With the additional property tax revenues coming in, that estimated, estimate has declined to about nineteen-point-eight million dollars. The last two years of the plan are trending similar to the original estimates. It is important to note that this craft, this graph does not include the phased-in cost increase for retirement anticipated in eighteen nineteen of thirteen million dollars annually due to the changes made by the retirement board. The budget does include a set aside of that fund balance, as indicated, uh, to temporarily mitigate those increases. The bottom two lines show the anticipated reserve use change. Last year, we anticipated the reserve use for seventeen eighteen would be near ten million dollars. That amount has declined to three-point-nine-eight-eight, specifically for the fire fund contribution. The fund balance carryforward was sufficient to cover the budget gap in lieu of the reserve use. The last two years of the plan are, as indicated, trending lower than originally projected, primarily due to the estimated greater use of fund balance, uh, to, in order to preserve the reserves. It is imperative that we stay focused on the plan, it is clearly working. We have remaining deficits of twenty-eight-point-three million dollars that still need to be resolved. As previously mentioned, at least on a temporary basis, we have the plan, uh, for the known increase in pension costs beginning in seventeen, in eighteen nineteen. We do need to find a long-term source for the state's change in maintenance of effort costs for the in-home supportive services of at least three million dollars over the next two years, and we need to work on identifying the impact and the alternatives to the minimum wage increase of up to fifteen dollars an hour by January first of two thousand twenty-two. In conclusion, we are pleased to note that all departments are in concurrence with their budgets as presented. This budget, again, seeks to balance the allocation of resources between ongoing service needs, quality-of-life programs, and the maintenance of facilities that support those services. The budget is balanced within available resources and takes into consideration known future fiscal concerns. It is important that the county remain focused on fiscal stability and continue on the path to resolve the long-term loss of property tax revenue and the growing use of retirement benefits, or the cost of. The deficit mitigation plan is working and allows for flexibility should we recover the revenues that we've lost. That concludes my comments and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Are there any questions from members of the board? Okay, seeing none then, well, Ms., uh, excuse me, Mr. Lawson, does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay, thank you, then. We'll open it up to public comment, so if you'd like to make comments on the budget, please come forward. We ask that you state your name.
May I meet you?
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Perla Juarez Davis. Um, good evening, Honorable Supervisors, Chairman of the Board, and members of the public. Um, like I said, my name is Perla Juarez Davis. I work for the Department of Human Services, specifically in child protective services as a social worker. I actually train the social workers coming in, um, in investigation procedures and dependency law, and I'm also a forensic interviewer for victims of sexual and physical abuse. Um, I've been with the county for thirteen years. Today is my thirteen-year anniversary. Um, thank you. It is to this board's credit and the credit of executive management and frontline staff that we have worked together in our emerging from the oil revenue crisis with stabilized finances. Over the past decade, county workers have contributed immensely to address the financial issues of the county. During the last ten years, we've had no raises, no improvements in benefits, and taken on increased workloads. We are simply doing more with less. Unfortunately, county workers are not the only ones that suffer. The quality of services suffers and ultimately, the public we serve suffers. It is time that the county realizes that twenty-first century government services cannot be achieved without any investment. When money is short, there are two ways of solving this issue. One, you can cut back on expenses. I think we can all agree, we've done plenty of that. Um, number two, we can seek additional revenue. We've not done this enough, if at all, and we must look at all options if we're, are to improve our community and the services that we provide. Knowing this, SEIU members have submitted a contract proposal, um, that respects a budget and begins to solve problems with high turnover and training costs and unmanageable, excuse me, caseloads. We understand and agree with the need to be cautious. We believe our proposals at the table demonstrate that. We look forward to this board to help your employees rise up from poverty wages and invest in your community. Thank you very much.
Before I start, can I hand this out to the supervisors, please? As I said, good evening. My name is Juan Contreras and I'd like to say hello to the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Chairman, and members of the public. I've worked as a human services technician for the past four years. I also just had an anniversary, it was August twenty-sixth, that I got four years in with the county. Um, I'm here because just over a year ago, the county commissioned a survey to examine the public's attitudes and perceptions of libraries and county services. The interview sample included residents from the, every supervisory district. This survey asked a simple question, where should the county spend more money for services? And I handed you a copy of what they said. Not surprisingly, sixty-six-point-eighty-nine percent of the residents said the county should spend more on streets and roads. Between forty and forty-six percent of the respondents said that the county should spend more money on animal shelters, health and human services, parks and recreation, libraries, and fire services. Interestingly, twenty-five-point-four-six percent of residents said that, that said that the county should spend more money on jails. This was the least popular service. Does this budget mirror the priorities of our county? I don't think so. The county is spending about twelve million dollars on a new jail, consuming the majority of the budget, which our own county residents said was a lower priority than our roads, libraries, animal shelters, parks and recreations, and fire services. We believe there is enough room in the budget to make modest improvements for workers and improve funding for services that the community is asking for. The Kern County budget has some challenges, but can still support workers and the community. After many years of large deficits, deficit, sorry, the Kern County budget is finally stabilizing. General fund reserves are healthy. While the price of oil continues to be a challenge, it has improved over the past year. So I'm asking our Board of Supervisors to help our, your workforce succeed in providing the highest-quality service and meeting the needs of our community. Thank you.
My name is Jim Starr. I'm with Kern Behavioral Health IT Department. Um, I just have a, want a clarification on one of the slides. Can we bring back one of the slides? Is that possible?
Yeah, which one do you want?
Uh, the one with the costing of liv, cost of living allowance, uh, increases. It's the nine percent one?
Yep. Mr. Lawson, please.
That one.
Would you, the, the clerk is asking for you to spell your name, please, your last name.
S.T.A.R.R.
Thank you.
That nine percent that's there, it's, it's kind of unclear. Is that, how was that, how did you get that number, nine percent? What, what increased?
It's a combination of the percentage increase in non-general fund and general fund, uh, salary contribution from the county to employees.
So some salaries increased?
It's all salaries, and it shows a nine percent increase in all salaries for county employees over the past eight fiscal years.
The question I had, though, is, is it, is it new employees causing the increase or is it salary?
No, these are, these are our total, sum of all of our employees' salaries over the past eight years.
It's not broken down that way, then?
Pardon me?
It's not broken down that way, then?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding your question, sir.
Okay, so how did you get a nine percent increase if there's been no salary increases?
There have been salary increases. There have, there have been, there have been...
So, so which departments got that?
This is, so what this shows is, so four-hundred-and-eighty-eight million dollars in oh-nine-ten is the amount of money that's been paid out to employees. In sixteen seventeen, it was five-hundred-and-thirty-two million.
But, I mean, what departments got those raises?
Those, so those are, I believe, those are a combination of, uh, of additional employees, and, uh, there are people still getting step increases, uh, throughout the county. Uh, I believe, many people here probably have had at least a step increase or two. No, none? No, not a one?
Yeah. So what I'm trying to get at is, that eleven-point-nine-five percent is the actual brunt that we're facing in cost of living?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a nine, so, the amount of money that the county is paying out for salaries has increased by nine percent over the course of the last eight fiscal years. And it, we're, what we're trying to do on this graph is show that it is, uh, that has been an increase below the increase in the Consumer Price Index. But to also show you, uh, the, uh, the challenge that we have in that the benefit side, the county contribution toward employee benefits has exponentially increased over the past eight years.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next, please?
Hi, good evening. My name is Patricia Leal, L.E.A.L. I am here on behalf of Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability and in collaboration with Building Healthy Communities, Comunidades Unidas Action Team. We are here, first of all, thank you for having this public hearing for community residents to be able to voice their concerns and needs. We are here together, uh, to, to ask for the different needs that our community residents lack. Within our analysis, our report shows that only a small fraction of such expenditure directly benefits rural and underserved residents, especially the youth in South Kern. This is a great concern as community residents have continually expressed the need to improve the quality and capacity of public spaces in order to instill both pride and ownership of their communities. Beyond short terms of investing two million, uh, one-time two million dollars into parks and recreation, we are asking for a sustainable, sustainable, long-term solution to solve and invest in our youth and our communities that lack open spaces, that lack projects and programs that are going to benefit in the long run for them. Our communities are rich in history. I, I work with the communities of Rexon Acres, Lamont, Greenfield, Arvin, and Weed Patch. These communities have, again, a, a long history of underinvestment. Within the last ten years, investment, the county budget is not showing or reflecting the priorities community residents have for so long been voicing throughout the years. We are here tonight to make sure that those dollars get invested in the right places in an equitable way, not only distributing the dollars equally between districts, but in districts that for so long have been underinvested. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jose Mireles, M.I.R.E.L.E.S. I'm a resident of Lamont. I've been living there for forty-six years, and I'm here to talk a little bit about improving safety and mobility in South Kern County. Community Revelation Stages, Lamont Weed Patch Development, twenty thirteen. A concept plan is improve Route one-eighty-four, including Mountain View Road to Sunset Boulevard. With many communities' involvement, it includes identify opportunities to improve. Safer main streets for main recommendations. Number one, improve street, curb, and frontage to stimulate commercial activities. Identify activities nodes, reinforce complete streets network, improve gateways, general intersections improvement, raise media as pedestrians, refugees, high-visibility crosswalks, marketing, advanced yellow line, curb extensions, universally accessible curb ramps. The document includes short-term improvements, analysis, and recommendations. It includes recommendations to the county to develop local plan for Lamont and Weed Patch for specific goals. It includes recommendations to next steps. Life-formulating and acceptable strategy for rerouting of track traffics, truck traffics, and maintaining the existing advisory committees to follow up on these opportunities. We ask you to allocate resources in, in your county budget to follow up on the implementations of these recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Diana Mireles.
Good evening. My name is Diana Mireles.
Y voy a hablar sobre el problema de inundación en Lamont.
And I am here to speak on behalf of the Lamont flooding issue.
Nosotros los residentes de Lamont pedimos que designen fondos para que hagan estudios.
We, the community of Lamont, are here to ask for, for investment in the flooding investigation or flooding report.
Para resolver el problema de las inundaciones en dicho pueblo.
This comprehensive report will be able to help us solve the issue of the, of the flooding in Lamont.
Un estudio de, es necesario porque nosotros los residentes de Lamont y de Weed Patch...
This report is necessary because the communities of Lamont and Weed Patch...
No queremos una solución temporal.
We don't just want a Band-Aid solution.
Queremos una solución comprensiva.
We want a fully studied report, solutions that are able to solve the flooding.
Que protejan no solo a rancheros.
That does not only protect ranchers.
Pero también a los residentes de Lamont.
But primarily the residents of Lamont that live there.
Y que se les... Al mismo tiempo que le den un buen uso a esa agua.
And even look for reu, reusing that water.
Reportes de noticias indican...
Reports from the news indicate...
Que el problema fue causado por los hombres.
That this was a man-made problem.
Los rancheros.
Farmers and ranchers.
Por eso mismo... Por eso mismo el hombre puede encontrar la solución al problema.
For that same reason, this is a problem that can, that can be solved.
Entendemos que el condado aún está trabajando en reparar los años, los daños de la inundación pasada.
We, we currently know that the county is still trying to solve the flooding issues in Lamont till this day.
Eso nos cuesta a todos.
This, this is costing all of us.
En vez de gastar en reparar daños cada vez que hay inundaciones...
Instead of trying to solve these flooding issues every time it rains or every time there's a flooding issue...
Deben resolver el problema y así evitar futuros gastos.
There should be a one-time expense solution so we don't keep having to spend money to solve this, this, this problem.
Nosotros les pedimos que ustedes, los supervisores...
We are asking you tonight, Board of Supervisors...
Asignen fondos en el presupuesto.
Allocate specific dollars in the budget.
Que van a aprobar para, el presupuesto que van a aprobar para comenzar el estudio y solucionar nuestro problema.
Allocate specific dollars to be able to start this report on the flooding issue in Lamont so this doesn't continue to be a problem in, in the community of Lamont and Weed Patch.
Y les agradeceríamos que los residentes fuéramos informados.
And we ask that as these dollars get allocated into this study or comprehensive report, that community residents are also involved in this process.
Para nosotros poder participar a solucionar el problema.
So we can participate to be able to solve this solution.
Espero que se haya escuchado nuestra voz. Un comentario rápido?
I hope that my concerns, that you take into account my concerns.
En este día se está celebrando el primer año de mi nieta.
Another quick comment. Today, my, my granddaughter is, is, today is her first year birthday.
Y salí corriendo para venir a presentar, a representar a mi comunidad.
And I came running tonight regardless of her being her first birthday to talk on behalf of my community.
No espero menos de ustedes que también nos representen de igual manera. Gracias.
I don't, I don't expect any less from you for you all to represent our communities. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Gema Perez.
Good evening, my name is Gema Perez, P.E.R.E.Z. Gema, G.E.M.A.
Soy miembro de Greenfield Walking Group.
I am a member of the Greenfield Walking Group.
Desde hace varios años nos hemos enfocado voluntariamente en transformar los parques que la comunidad tiene miedo ir.
And throughout the years, we've been working with community residents to improve our local parks.
Lo hemos logrado en el Parque Estier, en el Parque de Rexland.
We have been able to, to improve the Estier Park and the Rexon Acres Park.
Y nuestra, nuestra futura visión es el Parque de Greenfield.
And our future vision for improvement is the Greenfield Park.
Para eso pensamos hacer la zumba voluntariamente.
For that, we as community, Greenfield Walking Group is looking forward to creating a free zumba class for the Greenfield Park.
Ya hemos identificado que si hubiera una banqueta ayudaría mucho a que la comunidad viniera.
And...
Walking path?
Sí.
Un lugar para...
Una será, una banqueta. And we have identified that if a sidewalk is, is incorporated into a park, community residents would be able to come and enjoy walking throughout the park.
También el, el parque de los juegos es para niños muy pequeños.
There's also a need for, for playgrounds for, for young children.
Ah, estamos uno para niños más grandes.
And we need one specifically for older young, youth, youth.
Y de paso una zumba porque con el calor que hace aquí, los niños no pueden disfrutar ahorita de los juegos.
And there's a need for shade for the playgrounds, especially with this heat.
Yo pido que ustedes diseñen un, en su presupuesto dinero para, para lograr este objetivo y transformar este parque.
We therefore ask for this budget to allocate dollars directly going into this park for shade.
Y por nuestra parte estamos dispuestos a ayudar en lo que sea posible.
And on our behalf, we are ready to, to help in any way possible and be involved.
Muchas gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Patsy Ouelllette, O.U.E.L.L.E.T.T.E. Good evening, Supervisors and ladies and gentlemen. I'm here tonight in defense of the budget for the Parks Department. As you know, our county government is divided into separate departments for the sake of efficiency. Because of this, some departments take on an aura of more importance than others. For example, the Sheriff's Department and Fire Department seem to be of utmost importance. I would like to remind us all that the county as a whole is actually one unit, that the departments work synergistically, and the health of the whole is determined by the health of its parts. Any sheriff's deputy, teacher, or doctor will tell us that the family unit is integral to the structure of a community. Our families work hard every week, many with more than one job. Time for relaxation and family togetherness is important for the unity of the family and hence, the unity of the community. Building strong families and strong communities is a public health imperative vital to public safety and the success of law enforcement. So, as benign and unimportant as our Parks Department may seem on the status ladder when allotting money, please remember that our community parks provide opportunities for families to be together, to relax and have fun, to refuel for another hard week ahead. Please remember the importance of the Parks Department when working on the budget. Thank you.
My name is Jocelyn Cuevas, J.O.C.E.L.Y.N., in Cuevas, C.U.V.E.A.S.
My name is Diana Cuevas. We're here to talk about Rexon Acres. We're here to represent the youth ourselves. We're part of the youth Greenfield Walking Group. And I've been a resident from Rex, uh, excuse me, Rexon Acres for eight years, and I have experience in seeing how the park is myself. I've seen broken glasses in the playgrounds, needles, and not only that, I think that having more shade in the playgrounds to gather more youth is something really important. And also, we are working on, on indoor soccer fields, and it's in process right now. And having a water park will help and bring more youth, having more lightning in the park, because sometimes it gets too dark and, um... You know, it's just, it's unsafe. It's really unsafe. There's a lot of gangs and everything. I believe we should have a youth center for the youth to distract themselves. And I believe that it, us as youth, not only youth, but also for families, to make the park safer. And I just want to see my brothers and sisters be able to go to the park safe, because maybe they don't go to the park, but the bus stop is there, and they have to be in the park. There is no choice. We had a work on sidewalks in Rexon Acres, and it was a success. We got $5.6 million, so that's, we're getting there, and I think if you help us out, we'll be, we'll be so happy, and it'll mean a lot for us as the youth, for a new generation too.
Thank you, ladies. Well done.
Chairman, just a quick question. Is this your little sister?
No, she's my cousin.
Okay. Same family. How nice. What a good role model. Thank you, Chairman.
Good evening, I'm Jason Alvarez.
You can pull the mic up, Jason. Here you go.
I'm representing the youth from Greenfield Community and Rexon Acres. My comment I wanted to tell you guys is that our communities are growing unsafe because of the usage of marijuana, and the dispensaries are increasing. And our communities are little ones, the, the kids from, from elementary schools around, around those dispensaries are getting used to the environments of the marijuana usage. Also, the programs that, programs that will help our youth get, get, get knowledge about college and things to do after they graduate from high school, or, or just to do, to do around the community will help out too. Instead of going and finding places that will be making them drug addicts or, or using marijuana. And some, some, something also that's unsafe in those communities is that elementary schools don't have safe, safe streets to walk, to walk in. The cars pass by really fast, and sometimes they, they even, they're about to get hit by a car, and those are making, those things are making the communities unsafe, and we need things to fix them. Like, like improvement of the streets and making programs that will help the youth be, be more involved in communities or, or think about later in life. Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre Roberto Garcia.
Good evening, my name is Roberto Garcia, G.A.R.C.I.A.
Vengo de la comunidad de Arvin.
I'm from the community of Arvin.
Estoy viviendo en esta comunidad por los últimos diez años.
I've been living in Arvin for the last 10 years.
En esta ocasión vengo a pedirles, por favor, que incluyan la calle Comanche en el, en el presupuesto, porque es una calle que está bastante deteriorada. En los diez años que tengo viviendo ahí, jamás se le ha hecho nada.
This time, I'm, I'm asking you to allocate funds to, to fix the Comanche Road, because in the 10 years that I've been living in Arvin, I haven't seen any fixing, any upgrade of that street or route.
Creo que nuestra comunidad merece un poquito de, de nuestros impuestos que pagamos, que se vayan ahí, porque es una vergüenza que nuestra comunidad tenga esa calle como, como carretera, ya que es un peligro, porque en, en algunas ocasiones va uno buscando el mejor, el mejor camino, y ha habido, ha habido ocasiones de que dos carros, uno que va y uno que viene, pueden hasta causar un accidente.
I believe we reserve back some of the taxes that we pay to fix this street, because it's also very dangerous. When we are driving, we are trying to zigzag and avoid the, the halls, but sometimes the frontcoming traffic is trying to do that also, and there is a huge risk of accidents.
Estoy yendo a las juntas de la ciudad de Arvin, y les hago la misma pregunta, ¿por qué no arreglar la calle? Ellos dicen que el condado, todo está en, en las manos del condado, porque la ciudad de Arvin está lista para, para hacer su parte. Entonces, ¿por qué no hacer esto en esta ocasión, ya que es el tiempo para mejorar nuestra comunidad?
I go on regular basis to the Arvin City Council meetings, and I ask them this same question, and they said that they are willing to collaborate with the county to take care of this issue, and these occasions that you, the supervisors are approving the budget is a, a good time for you to take care of that.
En alguna ocasión me tocó ver un, un accidente ocasionado ahí en, en la calle Comanche por, a causa de un hoyo. Un padre de familia venía con su niño en su carro, cayó un bache y se le tronó su llanta. Esto no puede estar pasando en esa calle, ya que si otra persona hubiera sido, se viene directamente al condado y le pone una demanda, y para qué esperar a que alguien que sí sepa de verdad un poquito de leyes venga a poner una demanda que nos va a quitar nuestro mismo dinero.
I witnessed an accident in which a father was driving, and he hit a hole, and the tire was flat, and this shall not be happening, because someone that may know the laws may come and file a lawsuit against the county, and that's not good for no one, because we want those monies to be invested in the community and not fighting legal lawsuits.
Espero que pongan un poquito de atención y nos tengan un poquito de, de respeto a nuestra comunidad, y que se haga ese trabajo por bien de todos. Gracias por escucharme, y espero que, que sí se, se resuelve este problema.
I hope that my comments are taken in consideration, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
My name is Gustavo Aguirre, A.G.U.I.R.R.E., and I'm with the Center on Race, Poverty and Environment. And as you saw, several of the residents from different communities are organized, they are hungry of improving their communities, they are willing to work with you. It's a resource that you as supervisors need to, need to use. Not only the residents, but they have the support of many organizations like my organization, and we are willing to work with you. And I think some of the comments on Rexland Park in Lamont, we have been able to work together with some of the agencies of the county, been able to secure funds. So we are not here just asking, saying, give me, give me, but we are willing to work together. Unfortunately for residents and organizations, many times the final decision is on the county, and we cannot do anything if you don't get involved, so please get involved in that. And just to mention that, out of all the comments that the residents made, we are going to provide some documents. There is a letter initially was sent to Supervisor Perez, because most of these residents that spoke are from her district, but obviously, these, these needs are not only in, in South Kern, but in each and every part of the county. Some of the, some of the documents that we are going to provide you is a list of priorities that communities identify moving forward, from all the communities that already made comments, and together with some estimates of those priority lists that they have for your consideration. We are going to give a copy of the plan that was developed on 2013 to improve the, the 184, the main street in Lamont. We are going to also share with you the article that Mrs. Diana Mireles mentioned about the flooding. We are also going to share with you a, a, a master plan for the, the park on Rexland Acres, and as you heard, because... Acres. And as you heard, because there is a plan already, the community has been working with the county and there is progress already. So it is proven that when we work together, we can make things happen. And the last document that we are going to share with you is a health impact assessment that was made several years ago when the building healthy communities started. And this document identifies some of the priorities in the communities of Lamont, Waypach, Arvin, and Greenfield. So here is the package for your consideration. And please, one of the asks from the residents is if you have, my understanding is that you are proposing $3 million for parks, please allocate those for the most needed low-income communities, not only South Kern but throughout the Kern as I mentioned. And I think, yes, we understand that safety is the most important issue or thing for the county, for the supervisors. I think it is for everybody. But safety is not accomplished only building more jails, more prisons, or hiring more sheriffs. I think safer parks, as the lady, the young lady mentioned, safer streets, those will reduce the accidents, the crime, and therefore the safety of all of us will be better. And I just want to share another part that in regards to my brothers and sisters from SCIU. The human capital is the most valuable capital that the county have and I think you need to consider that, the most valuable. Just a personal experience, my wife passed away last December. I have a 13-year-old daughter. It's September almost and she's supposed to be getting social security from my wife for her to eat. Yet, she hasn't received a penny from that. Fortunately, I'm working, I've been able to feed her, obviously. But I don't want us to happy here in Carr County waiting eight, 10 months to get services. I think the services that we, the residents of Arvin, excuse me, of Kern deserve, I think, ensuring that the employees of the county are, you know, really, really appreciated. Thank you. And here are the letters.
Buenas tardes, miembros de supervisores. Mi nombre es José Ramón Colado y vengo representando a la comunidad de Delano, de Delano, California, una ciudad que ustedes parece que no recuerdan.
My name is Jose Colado and I come from Delano and it's as if Delano isn't remembered by the Board of Supervisors.
Vengo exigir, no pedir, vengo exigir atención de ustedes para nuestra comunidad.
I am urging, not asking, urging for you to pay attention to our community.
Nuestra comunidad de Delano necesita más atención de ustedes.
The community of Delano needs more attention from you.
Específicamente en el lugar donde yo vivo, en mi familia viva, que venimos aquí varias personas de mi comunidad, en la avenida Laro, donde he vivido por 16 años, pagando impuestos, sirviendo a mi comunidad como debo ser, trabajando duro como muchas personas aquí, tal vez como ustedes, tal vez más que ustedes.
Laidell Avenue is where my family and I have lived for 16 years. We're taxpayers, we're good citizens, and we're hard workers, perhaps more hardworking than some.
Yo estoy consciente de que cuando ustedes hacen las decisiones del presupuesto, todas las decisiones que hacen es estar pensando en el bienestar de nuestra comunidad. Eso se comprende. Estoy consciente de que las decisiones que hacen con el presupuesto afectan a nuestra comunidad y siempre piensan, mayoritariamente, en las personas que no lo necesitan tanto y nunca piensan en las personas que verdaderamente lo necesitamos.
I'm aware that decisions are being made and these decisions are affecting our community. And actually, most of these decisions are being made for people who really don't need them instead of the people who really do.
Las decisiones de ustedes impactan a toda la comunidad, a toda la comunidad, especialmente la gente que lo necesitamos. Me gustaría llegar hasta sus mentes y hacerlos pensar que tienen que trabajar más en donde más se necesita.
Your decisions impact the whole community, especially the ones that need it the most. And I need you to understand, I need you to get it into your minds, that you must work for our community.
Cuando ustedes deciden a dónde se va el dinero de nuestro condado, siempre estamos esperando que todo trabaje equitativamente o igualmente. Desafortunadamente, no está sucediendo eso. Yo llegué a Estados Unidos sólidamente en 1987 pensando o teniendo en la mente que en Estados Unidos se vive mejor. Sí se vive mejor. Yo adoro este país, adoro mi California, adoro mi condado profundamente.
Where you decide the money goes, for our county should be for everyone. It's supposed to be that everything is equal and unfortunately, it's not. That doesn't happen. When I came here in 1987, I thought that the United States is where I would live better. I adore the United States of America, California, and my county deeply.
Yo creo que deben de tener mejores ojos ustedes caminar por nuestras comunidades en todos los lugares y mirar dónde se pueden hacer cambios, buenos cambios. Aparentemente, o yo siento, que no está sucediendo eso. Yo trabajo duro, muy duro, pago mis impuestos con los cuales ustedes están trayendo su dinero a su casa, me imagino, o parte de eso. Solo que yo quiero o pido por mi comunidad es de que tengan más conciencia y que piensen bien cómo mejorar nuestro condado. Más bien.
I hope that you can, with your own eyes, walk in our community and see where can change happen, where can good changes be made. I feel like you're not doing it. We're taxpayers, we're very hard workers, and I imagine that from our taxes is how some of the county has its budget. I want, on behalf of my community, a better community and I want you to manage the county better.
Yo aquí quiero vivir en mi ciudad de Delano, aquí quiero morir en mi ciudad de Delano. Adoro el condado de Kern y, por favor, tengan en mente que las decisiones que ustedes hacen con el dinero que ustedes manejan nos afectan a todos, especialmente a los niños que son el futuro de nuestra comunidad. Quiero también pedir, especialmente en la comunidad de Laidell Avenue, ya se me sacó la boca, que, por favor, hagan un esfuerzo posible, yo sé que lo pueden, señor Gleason, yo sé que pueden poner un dinero extra para arreglar todas las calles en necesidad. Por favor háganlo. Por favor. Gracias.
I want to continue living in my city of Delano. I love Kern County. I want to die here. But with this money, this budget, it affects everyone, especially our children who are our future. And especially for my community on Laidell Avenue. I'm asking you to please make a stronger effort, Mr. Gleason, to put money where we so desperately need it.
Por último quiero dar una fotografía de lo que sucede en nuestra calle cuando la lluvia llega, en el camino donde nuestros hijos van a caminar para agarrar el camin a la escuela. Se pueden quedar con ella, yo se las regalo.
I would like to gift you with a photo of where our children walk to and from school every day. This is just recently, this past winter, of the flooding and this is what I want you to see. This is where our students walk.
You can give that to the clerk. Thank you.
Mr. Colado, Mr. Colado?
Yes.
Could you please give your information, your personal information, to a gentleman over there, Mr. Alsop?
I would love to do that again.
Thank you very much.
Who'd be next, please?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es José Fernández y yo vengo representando a la comunidad también vecina aquí de José Colado, que es la calle Laidell Avenue en Delano, California, perdón. Vengo también a exigir que se nos escuche por la participación que estamos pidiendo para que nos arreglen la calle ya que está en muy malas condiciones y sabemos que hay muy buenos presupuestos para arreglo de calles. Queremos ser partícipes de estos fondos ya que vivimos como abandonados en esa ciudad. Realmente veo que todos los vecinos pagamos taxis como cualquier otro y en realidad no se nos está viendo por donde vivimos, donde caminamos. Somos personas que aportamos de nuestros impuestos igual que cualquier ciudadano y esperemos que se nos escuche ya que el presupuesto es muy alto. Y no es la primera vez que venimos a preguntar sobre esto de la calle, es la segunda ocasión a la que venimos y esperemos se nos escuche un poquito más. Gracias.
My name is Jose Fernández and I also come from the same community as Jose Colado, Laidell Avenue in Delano. I'm coming and representing my community from Delano. I've come here to urge you to please listen to our asks, to our petition, that we have needs on our street and we're asking you to fix those needs. It's not a paved road. They're in very bad conditions and we know that there are designated funds to fix streets and roads in Kern County and we would like to be a part of that budget. Our road, our neighborhood, has been abandoned by the county and it's not fair because we pay taxes. We would like for you to listen and we would like you to know again that our taxes should be treated equally like everyone else in Kern County, like any other citizen in Kern County. We hope that you would listen and put our road in the budget. We know that there are designated high funds in the budget and again, for the second or third time, we are asking you, the Board of Supervisors, to listen to us and put us as part of your budget. Thank you.
Muy buenas tardes, miembros del condado. Este, mi nombre es Silvestre Castrejon. Yo soy residente de la ciudad de Delano pero pertenezco a una colonia que es propiedad del condado que fue firmada, fundada en 1983. Tengo 34 años pagando impuestos de mi casa, lo cual nunca se les ha hecho un arreglo a las calles. Ya se están deteriorando bastante y queriera, quiero pedirles, por favor, que pues en el presupuesto de ustedes pongan para arreglar esas calles. Creo que no lo merecemos. Muchas gracias.
My name is Silvestre Castrejon, S-I-L-V-E-S-T-R-E-C-A-S-T-R-E-J-O-N and I come from the community of Delano and I'm speaking specifically for a colonia, a neighborhood that is designated as county and not city of Delano. I have lived there since, or for 34 years and for 34 years I have been paying taxes to Kern County and I've never seen good improvements or improvements in our neighborhood. And we're asking to please put our road, our streets, our neighborhood in the budget. We deserve it.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. My name is Valerie Gorospe and I'm a community organizer for the Center on Race, Poverty and the Environment. Gorospe, G-O-R-O-S-P-E, first name Valerie, V-A-L-E-R-I-E. And I'll just read my comment. So in good and bad economic times, it's consistent that many Kern communities have not been included in the budget. Many of our communities that we work with directly have been consistently left out of the budget when it comes to big projects. We've been educated for quite some time, we've been educating for quite some time, our communities, on how to be effective advocates for their communities in regards to the budget process. We're not only advocating for a seat at the decision table. We must have a voice in the decision-making. We will learn and we will identify capital and major maintenance projects where we live. We will be here throughout the process for the next budget and the budget after that and the budget after that and the budget after that. Community members in Delano are supporting community members in Lamont, Arvin, Colonias in Shafter and different colonias in Kern County. Vice versa, community members in Lamont and Arvin are supporting folks in Delano like the people at Laidell Avenue. We are a coalition that is putting community first. Not just our own communities but the whole community of Kern as a whole. It's not just the groups that we're working with but with our brothers and sisters in the SCI Union as well. The Board of Supervisors is supposed to be accountable to the community. We know we will get resistance and that's okay because we're not going anywhere. We're stronger than ever because we're united. The county itself talks about losing revenue and is yet passing millions and a couple billion dollars on the budget. There are legitimate concerns regarding the decision-making process on where money is spent. Kern County has millions of dollars and we shouldn't have such extreme areas of poverty. It's time to start investing in these impoverished areas in our communities. Thank you.
Board members, I think it's very ironic that God will place me here this evening. Now usually I start with a scripture, so now here's a scripture. "If you tenderly care for this little child on my behalf, you are tenderly caring for me. And if you care for me, you are honoring my Father who sent me, for the One who is least..." For the one who is least important in your eyes is actually the most important one of all." This is from the book of Luke. I think it's actually very important that we have to remember, as I said on Tuesday, we are in a controlled environment, we are in God's environment. I thank you for sitting up in your chairs and showing some respect to the people that are taking their time as they get off for work, parents that are coming here, me who no longer work for the county with disabilities that I'm coming here, standing in line, having a wonderful person hold my place in line because there's no more room for us to sit over here for you guys to start paying attention. I live in a county area where in 17 years I've been paying my taxes. We don't have to have streets and curbs and stuff, we maintain our neighborhoods. But Lamont is 10 minutes away from my house, we see the flooding. It's appalling when I see these pictures and I hear these stories from these individuals. Where is our money? I know my 16 neighbors would like to know, where is our money? We don't rent, we own, where is our money? And so I think it's very wonderful to see these people that are county employees, that are working for the county of Kern, that you are also serving us as well. Where is our money? And where is their raise? I get social security. Every year I get a 2% incremental raise and my children do. Why aren't we giving this to our county employees? Why are our county employees going broke? This is not right, this is, this is just corrupt, period. Why are our, why are our department heads and department chairs having swimming pools where you get to push a button to make it work? Believe me, I know one when I used to work at probation, he used to brag. It's absurd. It's appalling, it's offensive and I want to say thank you to these members, the Department of, Department of Human Services, CPS, Mental Health, because you have made a huge impact on my nephew's life and on my life and making it a little bit easier and you deserve the money that you're asking for. Have a great evening, remember your policy.
Good evening. My name is Suzy Baker. I am a program specialist, one parent partner, peer support person for Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. I first got involved when there was only three people working for children's mental health. I found that unacceptable, I had a mentally ill child breaking my bones and I needed help immediately. So I got involved. And in the process I was able to get involved enough to create a job at Ground Floor and help in the building of Children's Services, which is now amazing. I look into this room and everybody here that serves families are heroes in my life. They're all heroes. Because my child today is an adult, 34 years old, still utilizing services when she can keep continuity of care going with her case managers, therapists and psychiatrists. She messaged me earlier when she knew I was gonna be here, asking me to let you know that in her course of dealing with mental health services, she's had 36 therapists, doubled that whereabouts for case managers and just under 50 different psychiatrists. That for my family means that those services are there in place for us to utilize but it also means my child and my family sharing our story with one more stranger and starting over again. People that I work with, they love their jobs, they put their all into it. They serve families for a reason. But they have to support their own families as I do. And not having a raise in 10 years has been very difficult for me, but I make ends meet. It's hard. Because every time my child gets another therapist, a new case manager or a new doctor, she doesn't want to tell her story anymore. She stops services, stops medication and then all of a sudden we are back to square one with me having to work and take care of her and try and get services going again. And that's very difficult to do and serve the families that I do, so there's no break because I do the same thing at work as I do at home. I also take my vacation every May, which is Mental Health Awareness Month, so that I can go to Sacramento on my own dime to advocate, to lobby and to be part of committees that make policy and I do that on my own time. I am the only parent partner in Kern County Children's Services, which means there is no training for me outside of what employees are required. So I use my own money to go in my vacation time to Sacramento to sit in on committees and to do my own training so that I can bring back to my community everything that I learned to be a better me and to serve the families as the better me. I just want to share our story with you and letting you know that every time we get a good therapist, a good case manager, a good psychiatrist, they are offered something better somewhere else as they serve their own families also. So we, our adventure starts over and over again, it's kind of like Groundhog Day. I just want to say, invest in the people that are hanging in there, all these heroes in this room who are here to serve the families of our community and do their best to change this little part of our community, of our state and continue to do the jobs that they do on a shoestring budget. And I thank every one of you for being here to listen to us as it gets later tonight away from your own families. I thank every hero in this room for being here tonight and just ask that you continue to keep up the good fight because it does make a difference in a lot of families' lives, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lindsay Genel, G.E.N.E.L. I wasn't planning to be up here tonight, so I took a few notes when you were going over the budget. So I have a couple questions and a few comments. I noticed that you said that we are now hiring within, to promote within, which I think is excellent, but the issue with that is when a position, when somebody is promoted, that position is still left vacant. So that just adds on extra workload to the already well overworked employees. So I think it's great that we're hiring within, but I think that we still, we need to fill the positions that are being promoted, first and foremost. The second, it appears that, or I would like to have some more information on those charts, specifically the one that the gentleman had you pull back up earlier. When it, when you spoke about the increase, the 9% increase from 2009 to 2016 in wage increases, I would like to know if that, who that benefits? If that benefits all of upper management, Board of Supervisors, everyone in the, in the, you know, all the upper management? Because it's very frustrating when we, when we don't see an increase but then we hear after negotiations are closed that upper management and publicly voted workers are getting their raises, but not us. And then, thirdly, last I checked, I think California was the sixth largest economy in the world. So it's frustrating to see, contract after contract, that we're not, we're always getting the short end of the stick in sense of wage increases. I know, I work with many employees who have been topped out for 10 plus years and cost, that doesn't stop cost of living from going up. So I think that the budget is a fair contract that we're asking for. We're not asking for anything more than the regular cost of living increase as displayed by your chart earlier. So I would just like to thank you for hearing me out tonight and, thank you.
Good evening to the board and to everyone here tonight. My name is Yesenia Decasaus, let me spell that real quick, Y.E.S.E.N.I.A. And the last name is D.E.C.A.S.A.U.S. And I'm the union representative for the UDW IHSS Home Care Providers. And listen, I'm not here today to like share my story. I have been a caregiver twice for two family members, but we could also come here with many stories of what we do. But we understand that the board, that the management of the county understand the value of the program. We also know that the staff that works with this program understands the value of the program. We have a great relationship with the staff that runs the program and we support their struggle as well. But I'm actually here to thank you for finding ways to fund the program that is very valuable and to talk about the funding. So although the contribution for IHSS has gone up for the county, the state has found ways to mitigate the cost to the county for at least the next three to six years. And labor organizations have played a big role in making sure of that and finding, as we all work together to find ways to find a more permanent source of funding for this program, both at the local level and at the state level. So I'm here to say that we must also work together to raise wages for IHSS workers in a way that helps the county utilize the funds available from the state. We can't let minimum wage catch up to us. IHSS workers are making minimum wage and I'm here to tell you, we can work together to raise wages above the minimum wage in a way that the state will pay for their share. And especially in these hard times, I think that would be helpful to this county. Keep in mind that the presentation earlier about wages and benefits does not really cover all units. This bargaining unit, this unit of workers was not really part of that. Please remember that the IHSS workers do not cost you anything as far as pensions and benefits. And so with that, I say the IHSS program is delivered through our work and the investment that you are making in this program must be delivered as wage increases to providers. The service that we provide is the program, thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Julie Solis, J.U.L.A.E.S.O.L.A.S. I'm a Valley Fever Advocate. I'm here because I'm really disturbed. Yesterday in the newspaper, it said that the county of Kern is spending $46,000 on STD awareness, $36,000 on tobacco awareness, $27,000 for Zika. Okay, we've had five cases in 2016 of Zika, five cases, and all of them were acquired through travel. We had 2,310 cases of Valley Fever and not one penny is allocated for awareness. Why is that? Mr. Scrivener, why is there no money allocated for Valley Fever? When I bought my house in 2008, 2006, Ten-Ten Berriessa Court, they told us that we were in a flood zone, but you failed, me, my husband and my children, Mr. Scrivener, by not telling us about the Valley Fever. Why is there no money in the budget, yet Zika gets $27,000 and only five cases and they didn't even contract it here? People are sick, people are dying just from breathing the air and you give zero to that budget? Can I please get an explanation? We all deserve an explanation. These people are hardworking people and before the meeting began, I walked around the room and I handed out information and I was talking to people and almost everybody in this room knows somebody that has Valley Fever or had Valley Fever themselves. That's not fair to our community. You want a healthy, productive community? Help us be healthy by letting us know the dangers in the air. Zero dollars for Valley Fever awareness, that's unacceptable, zero dollars. Mr. Maggard, why is there no money for Valley Fever awareness that's affecting thousands of people in our community? No comment. Mr. Couch, you have a comment? Zero, why zero? No comment. Scrivener, I lived in your district, Ten-Ten Berriessa Court, when my husband got sick on his deathbed, zero, why is it zero? No comment. Gleason, do you have a comment at all? No, Ms. Perez, do you have any comments?
I always have comments.
Yes, you do, I appreciate, actually every time I've contacted Ms. Perez, she's always, always available to talk, unlike others that don't get votes. People are not gonna vote for you if you don't represent them.
You raised really great questions, Ms. Solis, thank you for asking them. These are questions we'll pose to the Public Health Director. I think it's, I think you asked really great questions. The other subjects I think are all important as well. We have, you know, we're off the charts with STDs with our young people.
Absolutely.
It's, it's pretty, it's, it's sort of crisis zone with a number of these things that public health is focusing on. So I think you raised great questions and we're gonna get you some answers.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Zero, Zika, nobody got sick from Zika in Kern County. $27,000? I mean, we gotta prioritize people, we need to prioritize.
Good evening, my name is Deborah McClanahan. I am a Kern County resident and have been since the year 2000. I started working for the Department of Human Services, the Mojave District Office, 10 years ago. I am an Office Services Assistant. I work the front lines at the front window of the Mojave District Office. I've been loaned out to the Ridgecrest Office. I've been, I've even worked in Bakersfield when we had black mold in our office and they were doing the restoration and repairing the damage that we employees were subjected to for years. It's a respiratory infection that does not go away. When it rains, it rains, the black mold comes again. Many of our clients have come into the office. I know them personally and I know them well. I have been working with them face to face, hand to hand. I am personally out in the lobby, working with my community and my people. I put myself out there every single day. Six years ago, I reached my cap from being an Office Services Assistant. Today, with all that I have to pay out, with county dues, retirement, medical, I am currently making almost $3,000 less a year. That does not take into consideration the cost of gas. That does not take into consideration the food I have to buy, my daughter, clothing, travel. We don't do vacations, we don't go to Disneyland. I would like for you to seriously consider the budget. I would also like for you to seriously consider some of the monies that have been received and are still being received and are being handled. I'd like to have people of the community take a look at the Kern County's financial statement. I'd like for you to look at it and I'd like for you to look at some of the deficits. I'd like for an understanding as to what the Kern County Tobacco Funding Corporation is. I would also like to know why it has four presidents who are the members of the Board of Supervisors with one employee. I thank you.
Good evening, honorable supervisors, chairman and members of the public. My name is Sonia, S.O.N.I.A., Chagoyan, C.H.A.G.O.L.L.A.N. I work as a Human Services Supervisor and I've been with the county for 26 years. I'd really like to get your attention on this, Mr. Maggard and Mr. Couch. I'm a staff development trainer, so I can tell when you're not interested in what we have to say here. I'd like to speak about the fact, I'd like to speak about the fact that Kern County has decided to operate in a way that costs more money over the long term and is creating many more problems than it solves. Many of the departments in Kern County act as a training ground for neighboring counties because we always have vacancies and once people have a year or two experience, they move to another county or government agency for higher pay and lower agency for higher pay and lower workloads. The cost of training and the lack of seasoned worker costs this county much more than we have saved by freezing wages for a decade. There are daily challenges that county workers face when there's a lack of investment. There is constant turnover in my department, and in that of itself creates a lot of stress for the rest of the team. On top of that, the workload is incredibly challenging because there are not enough workers to meet the demand. When I first started with the county, I was on public assistance for my own decisions. I've made bad choices in my life, but I survived it and was fortunate enough to have a caring and passionate worker who showed me that a county was a wonderful place to work, and I emphasize "was." Due to her passion, I applied and became employed, which kicked off my lifetime career here of 26 years. Labor Day weekend will start my 27th year. I currently train new eligibility workers who are extra help, human services technicians which are permanent. They do the same job, but the pay grade is not the same. A quarter to half of these employees are on some sort of public assistance. Now, these employees sit on both sides of the desk, as an employee and as a client. They start out with nine weeks of training, followed by four months of processing training on actual caseloads. If we're lucky, half the class remains with the county at this point, since leaving the county for private industry for more money, better benefits, and less stress. It's shameful that we have educated employees with four-year degrees or even master's degrees that rely on public assistance. We are wasting money that we cannot keep good employees that we train. As part of this budget process, we'd like to see the county account for how much the current hiring and training practices are costing taxpayers. If those costs had been invested in county services over the past 10 years, we'd be in a much different situation than we are now and regret not investing in public services. So maybe, maybe in three years, we might look at a raise, and then maybe in three years, we might be able to go to Disneyland, as Mr. Alpsop referred to it as. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Good evening, Chairman Scrivener. I had a big speech planned out tonight. Mike Shelton, I'm with the Kern County Roads, Public Works. Pretty much roads has been eliminated. A lot of the concerns tonight has been roads. You were giving a handout earlier about how roads were a major concern of the Kern County residents. Me being a RMW-3, which is a lead three in the roads department, I am tasked with fixing the roads that people are complaining about. There's two ways for me to fix a road, though. I can do the low-cost budget fix, which is spraying some material down, putting some oil sand down on the road, dragging a grader over it, and calling it done. We call it painting the road. It looks good, but it doesn't work. It's not functional. The second way is, I go in there and I sweep that road. I fix the potholes with the proper material. I spray it, I roll it, I take the material back and forth, I roll it again. I don't cut corners. But what I'm asked to do time and again is to make a showing. When Letitia Perez says, "What's wrong with Comanche Point?", fix it. Well, I can fix it, but I make a showing nine times out of 10 because that's what I'm told to do. I'm told to cut a corner. When I cut a corner, that means I cut costs. When I cut costs, that means I use an oil sand product, which is cheap. It's easy to come by. I don't use a 3H product that has durability and strength. That same road, I can patch and last three months or the next storm, or I can patch it the proper way, and it might last 10 years. The cost isn't much more to do it right, but the cost of doing it wrong? I can do that all day long because that's what I'm told to do. If I tell somebody that this is wrong, I'm insubordinate. When I ask questions to my supervisors, they say, "Shut up, do what you're told," because Mr. Scrivener wants it done. He uses the Board of Supervisors against us to make us feel like you're putting the thumb on us, on them, to get the job done. You don't want the job done half-assed. You want it done right. I want it done right. My brothers and sisters want it done right. It doesn't cost much more to do it right. Thank you.
Good evening, audience, my brothers and sisters that are here today, and community members. I'm going to get a bit emotional because... Well, my name's Veronica Vazquez. I'm the President of SEIU 521 Kern County. I've been a worker here for 11 years. I train Child Protective Service social workers. I train the community about child abuse and neglect. I train Master of Social Work, MSWs. And guess what? We don't keep them. They come to us, they train, and then they leave. So I'm here today to let you know, people are seeing the county changing and not in a positive way. Morale is down, and you keep taking more and more away. Meanwhile, the cost of living continues to rise, over 14% the last 10 years. Oh, wow, we get zero. Nothing. You should know, we are very committed to our work. I've been maxed out for five, six years now. I have an MSW. I can leave at any time, but this community means everything to me. I was born and raised in this area. And because of the way I'm being treated, I'm reconsidering. It's discouraging to see the county is not investing in us, that the county does not prioritize retention of good, experienced workers. As a trainer, I see this all the time. We're losing people. I want to keep working here as hard as I do for this community, but I need the board's support, your support, to provide the highest quality service to meet the demands the public, which is increasing at a high rate. If you only knew the size of our caseloads. Once we have trained human service technicians, which is a high cost to the community, we lose employees due to the stressful environment caused by unimaginable caseloads. For example, one division carries from 1,000 to 1,500 cases and have to meet a 95% accuracy rate and an 85 procedural rate. Our call center has 15 minutes from start to finish to complete an action that does not include resolving the client's issues, but by the eight-minute mark, they're being told to wrap it up. This does not provide us to provide accuracy and the highest quality service that you claim we provide. We can't do that. But actually creates stress and tremendous room for error. You don't understand how many of my brothers and sisters are going out on stress leave because they can't handle the caseload. You don't take that into consideration. Their mental health. We're supposed to be there to help people with mental health issues, and you're giving our workers mental health issues because you don't provide for us. So CEO Assop has stated he wants to better the service to the community. But how will he explain the errors due to unimaginable caseloads? Not only that, the death of kids. You know how hard it is to go from one community to the other community, to not be provided for transportation? You're told, no, that your transportation does not count. So then if a kid dies on someone's caseload, guess what? They're the ones that get in trouble for it, not you. We need more people here. But you guys don't see that in the media. You don't see people crying in their cubicles because of the high caseload. You don't see that. You think we're just asking for money? There's a lot more to it than what we're asking for. It's just not... You can't put a dollar sign on our mental health and our well-being for this community to make it something that it should be better than what you guys are providing for us. So not investing in our workforce has real impacts to services. In just the past three years, our workforce has experienced a 40% turnover rate. Our SEIU negotiating team has worked very hard in the spirit of reaching a fair settlement. And I repeat that, a fair settlement. All we are asking for is a decent contract that meets the needs of the community and the workers who help keep Kern County residents healthy and safe. You should be applauding these people out here. They're keeping your community safe and doing the work that you're not out there doing. No ride-along will ever put you in the shoes of them, and you don't understand that. All we ask is for our extra help employees who work side-by-side with us and do the same work should be paid equal wages, not less. We don't see any less in them. They do the same work we do. We cannot continue supporting inequality for all we hope this board corrects so that we are able to rise up together. When workers have more income, guess what? We are able to spend that money in our community. This ripple effect improves the lives of Kern County. This is Kern County right here. You should be listening to your constituents. Thank you for your time, and I thank all the community members here today.
Good evening, Chairman Scrivener and fellow Board of Supervisors. My name is Francisco Martinez. I am an SEIU 521 Union Member. I am a CPS social service worker, and I've been a county employee for almost 14 years. I got involved with SEIU a few years ago because I saw the need to help improve working conditions for my coworkers. I have been a community activist for over a decade, and I started seeing similar hopelessness and stress at my work site that I encountered in some of the distressed communities I work with. I became a union activist because there was a need to identify work site issues, organize workers around these issues, and empower our bargaining team members to fight for a good contract. Right now, many CPS social service workers find themselves under great duress. The great passion for their work and clients that they brought to the job is being replaced by dread. We have been providing these services for 10 years while increasing our contributions to our health plan and increasing our contributions to our retirement plan. All of this while taking on increased responsibilities, taking on increased caseloads, and having to accomplish all of this with reductions in staff and many vacancies remaining unfilled long enough that they are in danger of being deleted. I became a union activist because I wanted to address the way the county treated its employees in the past. I became a union activist because I want to address the way the county treats its employees in the present. I feel that there is a total disconnect between management and employees. I want to submit that our union proposal will help address the high turnover rate at DHS and the high rates of catastrophic leave. I became a union activist because I am concerned that the future CPS will be bleak if we don't change the climate of working under duress. Our pay must be more equitable so CPS social service workers can find their passion again, and we can hire enough workers to reduce caseloads. For us to accept the county's proposals is conceding to high rates of early retirement, conceding to low retention rates for newly hired CPS social workers. We have many CPS social workers with Masters of Social Work degrees who do not want to remain at the Department of Human Services and leave to work with the prisons. They leave to work for the Kern Behavioral and Recovery Services. They leave to work for the hospitals. They leave to work for Kern High School District, and they leave to work for the state and federal government. In conclusion, the county... There's a huge cost to low wages, high turnover, and low morale. That money should be going into workers we have and not to training new ones to replace. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary DiArman. I had not planned on talking, and so I'm going to be a little bit nervous here. Thank you for giving me a minute. I wanted to talk about, in just a minute, there we go, investing in the county. Providing fair and much-needed raises is investing in the county. Providing modest raises to the employees of the county will be spent and reinvested in the communities as we raise our families. The expectations of our jobs has increased, and the cost of education to even obtain these jobs is increasing. Our cost of living is increasing, and year after year, we are expected to do more with less. Some of us serve the most vulnerable and neediest of our community. By investing in your workers, you will be investing in bettering our community, which is the inherent purpose of our government. A consequence of not investing in our workers is our workers leaving our community and moving to jobs in the private sector, not because they want to, but because they must. Please invest in our community to maintain our trained and seasoned workers. By doing so, we maintain strong, knowledgeable workers who are equipped to serve our community. They provide stability, and it strengthens the families of our communities. We too are the community, your constituents. If I didn't say, my name is Mary DiArman. I'm with the Kern County Department of Human Services, and I very much do love my job and all the clients and community members that we service. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cesare Aguirre. Like many other people today, I didn't plan on speaking, so please excuse my jumbled notes and thoughts. I see one problem that was stated was that we needed new forms of revenue, and we needed to take advantage of some forms of income or find money. And I think to do that, we need to be creative. Kern County is stuck in a rut of, you know, trying to do the same thing over and over and appeasing some corporations and imprisoning communities and overburdening them in order to make, you know, a small profit, in order to keep the budget going rather than to promote public health. While standing in line, I found a couple of things that I thought would help. The number-one reason of bankruptcy in America, in personal bankruptcy right now, is health, is medical bills. And when I looked into Kern County, I mean, we have the worst air in the county. We have around statistics like one out of every seven kids in the school district here in Kern taking inhalers to school because, you know, there's a health epidemic when it comes to Kern. There's a tool called the CalEnviron Screen that uses things on its website. It says it uses geographic, socioeconomic, public health, and environmental hazard criteria. It seems like they used Kern County as a key or as a guideline on how to identify an overburdened community. When you look at the map that's provided, it says that there's three categories. There's one category that falls under disadvantaged for SB 535 and disadvantaged for SB 1550. Under both of those maps, one is red and one is blue. And when it comes to Kern County, we're striped red and blue like a candy cane because we're disadvantaged under both of those laws. Both of them are going to come under... They're updating their funding guidelines for agencies to correspond with legislative requirements on AB 1550. And part of what got updated is that they increased and they approved rerouting funding from the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund and other places to invest in rural communities that are overburdened. They gave the responsibility to the California EPA on how to identify those overburdened communities. They did the CalEnviron Screen, and like I just stated, we are a model on what an overburdened community is. So based on that, we can use the California Air Resource Board and the California EPA as part of their AB 535 and SB 1550 and take advantage of them updating their funding guidelines to include Kern County in those attempts to improve disadvantaged communities. I know one member of the California Air Resource Board, Dean Flores, in a town hall not too long ago said that places like Los Angeles and Fresno get these funds at a higher rate, not because they're more disadvantaged, but because they have more personnel, you know, better personnel that's more equipped, and they have more time to do so. I believe it might be hard to do that due to the restraints that Kern has in the budget. But one tool that can be used is community-based organizations like the California Environmental Justice Network, which I'm a part of, Center on Race Poverty, the environment, which is another nonprofit that's here. And, you know, we work within the communities. We take advantage of things like grants from the California EPA, and we can serve as another form of revenue to kind of wane off these environmental stressors that affect these communities. Just real quick, according to something on bakerhill.com that was posted on the January 20th of this year by Harold Priest, he talks about a hidden health crisis that's going through America. And in a report that was put out on the Wednesday of that week of January 20th, made 20th, made by the California Endowment and the Center on Society and Health at the Virginia Commonwealth University, said that Kern County is the epitome of what represents this hidden health crisis. And this hidden health crisis is called toxic stress disease, and that is caused by basically what the model for the California EPA is. Under this study, hopefully you'll be able to find it, and so you can see that the only reason why this became a problem is because it started affecting white Americans at a higher rate. Obviously, we're aware that these, the people in this room that live within the communities are aware that the overburdened communities that are majority Latino and, you know, black and brown communities, they're kind of getting overlooked. I mean, for example, I think Latino is 42.5% of people identify as speaking, Spanish-speaking at home, and there was no Spanish translation. I find that appalling that as a representative government, you are kind of voiceless to half of your constituency. I feel like that is not a good way to represent the people that you are supposed to be representing. And I feel that taking advantage of these streams of money will help do things and make the improvements that you wanted to see. And just one last point that I wanted to touch on is I feel parks are very important. Like I said, the toxic stress syndrome comes about with, you know, having this super unhealthy environment coupled with super unhealthy socioeconomic environment that people are pinned under. And I feel like parks are an important thing to make sure that the youth stays, you know, in Spanish, se dice con ánimo. I'm not sure if anyone can help me translate that into English, but it means like they have more energy, more, exactly, more enthusiasm. And I think it was stated that it was, there's $2 million proposed for parks. And like I said, there's community-based organizations that we can work with, $3 million, but he said $2 million. So I wrote it down in my notes, in my notes. So hopefully we'll clarify that as well. And thank you for listening. And really, really, on behalf of everyone here, I know we have a lot of things to complain about. They're all warranted, but thank you for sitting here. Thank you for listening, and thank you for taking part in this democratic process. I'm happy to take part of it, and I'm happy that you're here to listen. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members and members of the audience. My name's Yesenia Ocampo, Y-E-S-E-N-I-A-O-C-A-M-P-O. The reason I'm here today is to represent the residents that I work with. And specifically, I work with the Dolores Huerta Foundation. I oversee their Cultiva la Salud program, which is a CDC Center for Disease Control-funded program. And although these CDC grants are very competitive, the reason why South Kern communities were chosen was because of the health crisis that we are facing. And when it comes to health-related, with health illnesses related to lack of exercise and healthy eating, Kern County, specifically South Kern, leads the average. We surpass the state's average when it comes to diabetes, when it comes to obesity. And so the aim of this program is to increase access to healthy foods and access to physical activity opportunities. And so with our role with this program is really to engage the residents that we work with. And in doing so, we, over the past almost three years, we have really organized on a grassroots level, we have organized resident committees in which we really get their ideas and their direction that they want to see these opportunities come about. And so today, I'm really here to show the support for park capital projects. Regarding the challenges surrounding active living, Greenfield residents have expressed the most concern for young people in these communities who do not have access to indoor or outdoor recreation services. Youth in these communities have a strong desire to see facilities and programs to hold their interests, such as youth centers and dance classes. Greenfield residents have also voiced their complaints about poor conditions of the Rixland Acres in Greenfield Parks and have requested maintenance and infrastructure improvements, including increased lighting, trash cans, picnic tables, and shade, as you also heard from other residents here. Other recommended policies and programs include working with school districts to provide joint-use facilities in areas where park and recreation facility deficits exist. We are here to show our support and also our partnership moving forward, and we would really like to see those funds not divided evenly across the five districts, but really where there is the most need, where incorporated communities don't, they don't rely as much in the city parks and Rix, for example, Bakersfield City Parks and Rix. And thank you for your time, and I look forward to reading the budget tomorrow. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Jackson. I am the President of the NAACP Bakersfield Branch. I wasn't going to speak on today. Excuse my dress. Was working with some youth earlier today. But first, let me congratulate Letitia Perez on her state appointment that recently happened. But also looking at this budget and the things that are happening here in our county, I think we also need to look at risk management when it comes to our Sheriff's Department, the issues that are happening right here in the city of Kern County. We have the Department of Justice looking into our county. We have the report that came out in 2015 that our county is the most dangerous county in the nation when it comes to police brutality and excessive force, and that's why the Attorney General is looking into our county as we speak. And as we look at so many issues that are happening right here in the city of Kern County, the workers, we're talking about building and investing into more jails, into our prison system, and we've seen that that is a broken system. We have great workers here that are working in the areas that are needed where it comes to mental health, and a lot of these issues spur from mental health cases. And so if we are not providing our county with the right services, the qualified individuals to help our community, then we are doing our community a disservice when we have people that are here to help our citizens, that are here to help and guide them, but we're investing the money in the wrong places. If we invest our money into the right people, into the right resources, we've seen in other cities across America where those improvements are happening. But if we are continuing down the road of trying to put money where it's not needed and not into the hands of people that can actually help our community, of course, once you build a jail, it's a business. So when you build it, you have to fill it. And if we are looking down the road of helping people, we need to invest and find people that are sitting here today. Cutting corners, not putting where our dollars should be to help our constituents is not a good job when it comes to our Board of Supervisors. So I'm going to encourage you and urge you as you look at this budget that we make the right decisions, that we look at improving the services that we have, that we don't put money into our prison system, into our jails, but we put them into people. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sus Mendoza, and I just want to touch up on the revenue. I hear from deputies in that area, well, there's only one deputy in covering, you know, a very large area. It's very understaffed. Well, there's only, like I said, one deputy from that Frito-Lay area to McKittrick. It's a big area. I don't know if you're aware, the radius that they cover, that one deputy. Money not being invested in jails, I'm hearing people about jails, you know, there's a lot of criminals that are being put out of jail because there's no room for them, or sometimes I hear it's because it's less expensive keeping them out than keeping them in jail. And in the community that I live, you know, there's a lot of criminals running wild. It's like they took in over the community. And I grew up in Lamont. I grew up, and I'm very familiar with Arvin and all these areas. We need to take our streets back. We need to have, invest, what's that? I'm Bassell. We need to invest in having more deputies, keeping the criminals off the streets and in jail. So in that budget, a big priority is security. We need, you know, like all these other people that are, you know, providing services for the county, they're being underpaid. You know, this deputy, I've talked to him multiple times, and the morale that, you know, from all these different departments, from these county employees is like, I'm ready to retire, I'm ready to move, you know, go to another place. And we need to invest in our people that service our county and where they do their job, they do it well, where they don't have, where they're not overloaded with work. You know, you're expecting, you can't expect one employee or the amount of employees that you guys have now to do the workload that's, that is at hand. We need to, we need to, we need to change that. You know, I don't know when the, you know, next election process is for, you know, for the Board of Supervisors, but from what I see, this is my first time attending one of these meetings because of that deputy, you know, after telling me multiple times, well, if you want to change, you know, you have to come and see the Board of Supervisors. I am a community leader, okay? I'm a founder of a nonprofit organization, and I'm gonna make a commitment to my community, not only where I live, you know, all of Kern County. You know, there is a lot of injustice, there's a lot of poverty communities that are being overlooked. And instead of these monies going to new things that are not really important at this time, we need to invest them in those areas that really need some attention and fix them. So my commitment today is that I expect, I'm not only asking, I'm expecting for the right decisions and for that money to be used wisely, because if it's not, I will commit myself and with other supporters to come here and to have our voices heard and have some accountability put on where this money's going and accountability on your guys' behalf, because ultimately, you guys are the ones that are representing these different, different parts of Kern County, and you guys are voted in. And you guys are voted in to do a job. And I expect for you guys to do what's right for our community, for the betterment of our communities. Okay? I just want, you don't know, Mr. David Couch, okay? I'm willing to work, you know, and come up with ideas in that community. We don't have roads, we don't have paved roads. There's so many, you know, there's, it's not right what's happening there, and there needs to be some change, not only there, okay, but in all different areas, Lamont, Arvin, Delano, I don't know where you're at, but, you know, we need to really invest this money that's gonna be coming in, and this is the whole subject, you know, budget. It's time to really think and look into where that money could be best used. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sir, are you leaving? I'm Mitch Alfred.
Okay, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Refugio Valencia. Yo tengo varios años trabajando para Centro en Raza, Pobreza y el Medio Ambiente. Refugio Valencia.
His name is Refugio Valencia.
Tengo ya varios años trabajando en esta organización.
He has several years working in this organization. ¿Cómo se llama su organización? Centro en Raza, Pobreza y el Medio Ambiente. Centro y raza y pobreza. He's been working in this community for many, many years. ¿Y qué más quiere decir?
Y pues por la razón de mi trabajo, ando por todos los rincones del condado de Kern.
Okay, because of his job, he has to go around the whole county. ¿Usted está manejando?
Sí.
He's been driving around the whole county because of his job. Job he does. ¿Qué cosa de trabajo?
Porque trabajo con varias organizaciones, varias comunidades de aquí del condado de Kern.
Okay, he works with a lot of the communities here in Kern County. ¿Haciendo qué?
Organizando a las comunidades para que ellos se dan el ánimo y vengan a pedir lo que toda la gente ha estado pidiendo esta noche.
Okay, he is outstanding organizer. He works with a lot of people here in the community. He works with different community leaders in order to get together for, get them to get the courage to come to these places and speak out and be loud about what they need.
Una de mis preguntas para ustedes, ¿qué porcentaje de su área que supervisan conocen?
Okay, the question that he has for you guys is which, what percentage of the areas that you guys actually live in, you are actually supervised?
Entonces, se me hace que no conocen mucho de su distrito que cada uno de ustedes supervisa.
How much of the district have you guys actually supervised, and then the ones that you're making the decision on? How much do you know about the districts that you guys are making the decision on? That's what he wants to know.
Porque si ustedes se dieron el tiempo y reconocer su distrito, no estuviera como está.
Okay, he says that if you guys would have taken your time to actually look at the district, it wouldn't be in the shape that it is right now.
Porque como les mencioné al principio, yo tengo varios años trabajando en esta área.
Like I mentioned before, I had many years working in this area.
Y las áreas que las diferentes personas han estado mencionando tienen muchos años así.
Okay, some of the areas of the people that have been mentioning here, standing here complaining about the situations in their communities, it's been the same for years.
Entonces, una de las cosas que yo me, personalmente les quiero pedir a todos los supervisores.
One of the things that I would like to ask all of you personally, to all your board members are?
Es que ya hagan esas tareas que necesitan hacer en sus respectivos distritos.
Okay, to please do the job, to go to those communities and do the job that you're supposed to do in those areas.
Para que en lugar de que vengan a reclamarle, les vengan a echar flores.
And so people, instead of coming and complaining, they come and praise you for the work that you had done, for the beautiful job that you had done.
Porque son personas que al principio de su carrera política empezaron diciendo qué era lo que iban a hacer.
Yeah, because at the beginning of every political arena, everybody promised and promised and promised, but then nothing gets done.
No sé si alguno de ellos mencionó que también iban a hacer un puente sin haber río.
He says, he doesn't know which one of you guys were actually said that they could make a bridge, but with no river.
Entonces, por, no por, no por este, esperamos que no nos vayan a estar juzgando, escuchando y diciendo, eh.
Yeah, he just actually, what he's saying, what he's actually saying is that he hopes that you guys are actually listening and not just giving him the bird, you know, like flying off, like.
Ojalá que mañana en adelante empiecen ellos a llevar a cabo todas las sugerencias de los miembros de la comunidad.
He's just hoping that tomorrow you guys actually listen to everybody's complaints and actually think about it and take it into consideration, everybody's complaints and please.
Nuestras comunidades están deseosas de un campeón como ellos.
Yeah, our communities are aching to have a champion like you guys, so do something for it.
Eso va a traer bienestar a nuestra comunidad y salud.
That's gonna bring a lot of wealth and health for all of us as a community.
Yo sé que eso cuesta trabajo y dinero del que se habla que hay ahorita.
He says that, he knows that's gonna cost some money and some time, but they said that the money is there.
Okay, gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening, Amy Angeli, A-N-G-E-L-I. So I wasn't planning on talking either, but anyway. So I wasn't planning on talking either, but anyways. So I have been an eligibility worker. I've been a case manager, and now I'm a departmental analyst. I'm also currently, on top of being a departmental analyst, I'm also a commissioner on the Human Relations Board, and I'm also an active volunteer in our community. I say all these things not to brag. I say all these things because I want to remind you that not only have you hired all of us as employees for you, but we've also hired you to serve our community. I am from the LA area and I have enjoyed making Kern County my home and serving my, and serving my community in every way that I can for the last four years. County Administration Officer Alsop, I acknowledge there have been step increases and benefit increases that contribute to overall increases in spending for employees. But departments still have had to deal with cuts. Last year, as a result of, last year as a result of the last budget, departments became creative, generating revenue as they all took cuts. They've all taken cuts despite having to pay for these increases that you're speaking of. Except one department, which I dare not mention out of respect for your board. Many Kern County workers are looking to leave, myself included, due to what we see as a lack of concern for public issues and a lack of opportunity in regards to both compensation and being able to move the community in a positive direction. We want opportunity not only in our jobs, but opportunity in our communities. I have witnessed, in this room, governing bodies disregard the obvious concerns of the public. There have been public, there has been public outcry against several issues, which some I do not care to speak about because I don't completely understand myself. But there are some simple ones that I've seen, some simple issues such as the issue that was presented, I believe, early, early on this year, where several residents did not want another liquor license issued in, I believe, Fraser Park. The license was issued with no support for it, absolutely no support for it. There were more than 10 community members speaking out against it. And there was one person that came in and spoke in favor of it, who was, who was representing the corporation, who was seeking the lic, the liquor license. These issues like park cleanliness and safe, park cleanliness and safety, roads in outlying areas, and liquor licenses might seem unimportant to some of us in this room. Out of sight, out of mind, right? But these are the issues that a vast majority of the community faces each day. I'm solely here to ask you to think about those who are paying for all of us to be here. I feel honored to be a Kern County worker that the community can rely on. I'm not so sure they can rely on those that make decisions for their community. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name's Anna Vasquez, and this is my first time coming here. And I was not planning on saying anything, but I was actually very saddened because I came in with a lot of pride, being a newly county employee, leaving a job that paid a lot more than what I make now, but in hopes that I could create a better future for myself and my children. But I'm very disheartened to see the lack of interest and the lack of support that we are receiving in this budget proposal. Not once did I see a slide encouraging or motivating the Kern County employees of the awesome job that they have done in the past 10 years without a wage increase. I want to know why. Mr. Allesop, is there a reason why you didn't provide a slide just encouraging the people behind me since you kind of already?
Ms. Vasquez, he's, he's not gonna be able to respond to that. We, we are gonna have more budget discussion tomorrow.
Is it not an open forum? Like, do we not ask questions?
No, it's not. No, we listen, we listen to your questions, and then we can respond at the end.
Okay, so I did have a lot of questions of why there wasn't a breakdown in the salary so that new leads like me could understand where this increase was going if I've been hearing that the employees have not received a wage increase. Is this money going to people who, you know, like Mr. Allesop sitting here? Where is this money going to? So that's another question that I want to be noted in there, because I do not understand that. Also, we're building another prison. It's going towards funding for inmates that we currently have? Or are you guys proceeding in the coming years that we're gonna be able to fill this prison with members from our own community? Another reason why I'm here is because of the wage that I'm currently earning, I could be a welfare recipient. If I don't qualify for that 15 minimum wage increase that the governor's giving, even with my 6% increase, I'll still be making under $15. I think that's very unfair. Now, also here in the recommended budget overview, not once was it mentioned, even the proposal to even include from last year, things that were coming up. You guys should have known in the past 10 years that people were gonna be upset that they weren't receiving a wage increase. Why didn't you guys even include them? I want to ask, does everybody who sits up there, do you guys receive increases yearly? Everybody? Nobody receives a wage increase? So you guys have been without any wage increases? I'm just wondering, because I don't understand if you guys are working with the same amount that was given. So you guys are not gonna be receiving a wage increase, and therefore we are not gonna be receiving a wage increase, is what you're saying? We're gonna be being conservative. So we shouldn't be foreseeing any news clippings or any reports saying that any supervisors or anybody's gonna be getting a wage increase? Okay, just wanted to make sure we're fair. Okay. I need to read all my notes, but my friend wants to say something.
Okay, I never thought in my life that I would ever speak in front of you guys. You guys are bugging me on me looking at. But when I attended civil rights training, we do it every year.
Could you say your name, please?
Amanda Taylor.
Thank you.
And I'm a human service aide at the Department of Human Services, which is like a position that assists the social workers. We do basically what they do, but without pushing the paperwork and without the pay. When I took that training, they were showing us slides about poverty level. And I first understood like, oh my goodness, I can go from this line, trying to get into this room, to the next line so I can apply for food stamps and aid. And that's a shame, it's a shame. I make 1586 an hour, and I've been at that pay for like the last eight years. It's embarrassing. When you're 17, 19-year-old go gets, gets a part-time job that's making $17 an hour. And I'm like, what? You should be making 1025. She's like, well, how much do you make? And I'm like, a lot less than that. And I've been able to, I have, I have to have a second job to be able to maintain my home. Because like everybody else right here, I pay property taxes myself. So, like, seriously.
We're just asking for a fair contract.
From one line to the other, that's all it is, from one line to the other.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Linda Hibbert, and I'm a Department of Human Services employee, and I have been for about 16 and a half years. And I had absolutely no intention of coming up here tonight. I don't have anything prepared. But something had been weighing on my mind, and thanks to technology and the internet, I got the answers I was looking for. And I want to, I want to ask you guys about it. And I'm just gonna direct my questions to Ms. Perez, because she's the only one that will respond, I anticipate. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna preface my question with not only have all of my brothers and sisters not had a raise in 10 years, but there's been some people, self-included, that with the budget cuts of 2010, took a demotion. I lost $2,000 a month in pay and never got that back. Now, not getting a raise for 10 years is pretty hard. But having to take a demotion in lieu of layoff over budget cuts is a whole nother story. And there is a story behind that. I'm not gonna go into that tonight. But you guys and upper management have had a raise since we've had a raise, haven't you? Yes, you have. According to Mr. James Berger, who I believe might be here tonight, you guys got a 6% raise, which you gave yourselves and gave upper management in 2012. Okay, right.
Mr. Chairman.
You weren't here. And actually. And actually.
Mr. Chairman.
Karen Go and Mike Maggard were the only ones that voted against that at the time. But what makes you guys any better than us? We're the ones out there doing the work day in and day out. We're the ones, not me personally, because I'm not in CPS anymore thanks to my demotion. We're the ones out there on the lines, putting ourselves in homes, in the same homes that law enforcement go into, oh, with pepper spray. We're the ones that deal with angry clients, with rent-a-cops to help us. Oh, but now you guys spent how much money and spent how much money to have a guard out here, to have security screening? Why don't you do that at DHS? Why don't you take care of the people that work for you? Why don't you invest? You get back what you put in. Why don't you invest in your people? You give a little, you get a lot more in return.
Supervisor Couch, do you want to say something?
Good night, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. My name is Maika Tapia. I'm a FA leader of the Unitarian Universalists here in Kern County, and also a promotora de salud and immigration. This night, I want to support what Julie says about valley fever. I've been visiting the local detention center. Maybe you don't know that we have an ICE detention center? Do you know? Okay, we have an ICE detention center here in Kern County, and also is locally here in Bakersfield. And one of the things that so very surprised me is that when I ask the CEO, what is going on if some, if some, if they have a pregnant woman inside? So they say, no, she cannot stay here. We have to remove her from here to another facility. Because, let's, let's see why. Because we are living in a pandemic sun about valley fever. So that means that the federal government knows that we are living in a pandemic city or sun. But we don't, I'm not sure how this information, you can have it, that we are in a pandemic sun. Maybe you cannot move all the women that are pregnant, right? You cannot move them and move into another city to have safe place. Why? Because they are the most risk persons to get infected. So I suggest that you better do something, not just what the health department says, because this is a pandemic sun. And also, because what's, what is gonna happen after, right? I, last year, I have a cousin that got ill about valley fever. It's the first time that it's touching our family. But I know more people around myself, around the area, that are ill already. So that's one of my concerns. But I know, by the other hand, I'm working so close in the Taft community, and is it the district number four with Mr. David? And I see so how struggling is living in that community, not just because it's talking about immigration, right? And, and I know right now that money cannot use for, to prevent those people to, for being raped, to, to, to take him unfortunately from ICE, right? Every two weeks, we have ICE over there. And they are not looking for criminals. They just take moms and mostly dads. And they are placing here, some of here in Mesa Verde. But right now, I'm concerned because our brothers and sisters from the white community are in danger also. I saw a news that we have the highest risk here in stress illness. Here in Kern, the highest, Oildale, Kern River, and Taft. Our white brothers and sisters have a bit, these communities are, the, the percentage are more white community. And we have the highest overdoses deaths in the United States in those communities, in those three communities. So this is very, very, for me, is very concerned. Because they are my brothers and sisters also. And I, this evening, I was there in Taft, and the, with the Jan, the pastor Jan, he's from the church, Episcopal Church. She's working by herself feeding those homeless in Taft. And the community says that we don't have that kind of problem in Taft. They are foreigners, homeless. But it's not true. They are local people that are being out from their homes because they have drug problems or mental illnesses. So I suggest that, Mr. Couch, please keep that community safe. And not just because they are immigrant community, but also because our brothers and sisters that are ill in the white community needs help too. And this woman is by herself feeding more than 50 people every day at 5:30. So if anybody wants to see it, just go, please. And also, they are being mistreated by the sheriff. And meanwhile, they just want to eat. And they taken us as criminals also. So that's my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Again, good evening. My name is Lupe Martinez. I live in Delano. I'm not gonna go over all of the things that were already mentioned. However, I work for a nonprofit organization called Centro en Race, Poverty and Environment. And my colleagues and a lot of our staff were up here also in interpreting. And that was my point, that I hope that you sense that the need when somebody else speaks a different language and you don't understand, it's very, it's difficult. And I, that was my point, to, to show that we need to make sure that we're conscious when folks want to participate and can't. And that's exactly what's been happening with a lot of our outside lying communities, Shafter, Wasco, Delano, Lidle Road, all these communities that have, all these colonias that haven't been heard for 20, 30 years. And it's kind of a real shame. And to endure, you know, the children, like I said, I'm not gonna go through all of this, but it's, it's a shame that they're forgotten. But the other part that I'm really surprised, and I was working for the UFW for more than 25 years and knew Cesar personally, and I've worked with him for a long time. And so I wanted to kind of give you an example of something that I learned from Cesar and hope that perhaps you can take that into account. See, there was a company in Kern County that had over 1,500 workers that I organized, helped them organize themselves, and they won their election, and we negotiated with that company. In less than three months, of course, they, they had their contract, and it looked like it was gonna be real nice. Everything was, everybody was happy. Everything was, everybody was happy, but that didn't happen. In less than a few months, there were over 125 grievances that were filed, which put the company into a real bad situation because now it's all going through the attorneys and everything else. There was a thought about becoming partners. And we kind of threw this to the company. You know, you should consider not going away with your management, but listen to the workers. Listen to how they can help the company to be successful. The company was complaining that for the last 10 years, they had seen no profits. So we started to turn that around little by little. And because they did start to listen to the experts, and the experts being the employees, being the workers, they knew where things were wrong. They knew where the leaks were at. They knew where things were happening. Company started to listen. And by God, they were able for the last 20 years to have profits in that company. And of course, when there's profits and there were raises and the contracts were different. So my point to you tonight in listening to my brothers and sisters from SEIU, listen to the employees. Listen to your workers, who are your principals, who are the biggest resource that any organization or agency has. And if you listen to them, they can help you get out of that deficit, I guarantee you. And it does happen. Thank you. I hope you'll listen to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Janet Dejesus. I too was not going to speak today, but I felt compelled to say a little something. I want to, I'm just thinking how hard it would be to be up there, to be you guys. It's difficult. And I appreciate what you do for us. I too want a raise, but I'm pretty intelligent. And I know that many budgeting is very important. We're a conservative county. But I think someone had said, one of the speakers was saying they were a trainer. And I was thinking, forgive me, I'm kind of nervous. I was thinking, I trained for many years too. And the people leave. We invest so much time in them and they leave. But there's many of us, like me, I've been with the county for 20 years, who have stayed. And I love what I do. I have my supervisor there. And I invest in my peers, my time and energy to uplift them in many ways, to be positive, not only in learning what we do, but to help them. Because there's so many single women that work there. And we need to empower them to be strong and have courage and help their children. And many people said about mental health issues. So I think part of my purpose is to help them to, even though we're very stressed, to be positive. And I was thinking about one of the things that we get every month in our emails. A person leaving on catastrophic leave. Every month, one to two people leave because of the stress of the job. And I'm not going to say that it's not stressful, because it is. But I'm a pretty positive person. I've learned coping skills. But not many people do that. And so if you're not doing that, then of course, the pressure of the job will get to you. And, you know, I'm a person of faith. I believe in God and I prayed before I got up here to say something that was encouraging, first for you guys, but most of all, for the people behind us. And, you know, he controls all things. And I believe that if he were to impact any one of you in even a small way, to consider our pleas, it would be great. And I've never spoken here before and it's kind of interesting, but... I applaud all of the people that are able to speak with such, I don't know, grace. Something I have to learn to do. But thank you, Ms. Perez, for being outspoken. I know Mr. Maggard, he's a man of faith. And I don't know the other people here, but we entrusted you to do a job for us. And we just hope that God will impress upon your hearts to do the right thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers tonight?
Good evening. I wasn't going to say anything either. I was just observing and listening. And it sounds to me like the county of Kern sure needs a lot more revenues, huh? Yep. So, but anyway, I was thinking, remember...
Could you give us your name, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bernice Bonias. I'm a kind of environmentalist politician, whatever you want to call me. But I like to listen to everything and then at the end, maybe I have something to say. But anyway, has the county of Kern applied for any of those grants that the state has money, I understand right now, for EV stations, electric vehicle stations, so that people, like my next car, I hope to be an electric... Because of the bad air that we have and everything, my next car, I hope will be an EV vehicle. But there's no stations for us to have them. So have we not applied for some of those grants?
We'll try to get that answer for you, ma'am.
You have?
We don't, I said, we will try to get that answer for you.
Okay, that was one. And then number two is, remember Proposition 13 many years ago that was passed? And it was for residential on your property taxes, industrial, commercial, everything. So I think it's time for a revision of Proposition 13. I understand there is a movement to try to get that, where commercial and industrials would be exempt from the Proposition 13. I didn't vote for Proposition 13, by the way, because, you know, I knew that it was going to hurt the cities and the county and all that. But it sure has helped me because since then, I've become a widow. And I stay in my home because I can afford the property taxes because of Proposition 13. But I think it's time for us to take a look and revise it as far as commercial and industrial. And I'm asking for you, Board of Supervisors, to maybe do a letter of asking some legislators to take a look at that. And it would help a lot on the revenues for the whole state of California if that was revised, where they, because they're not doing things ethical anyway, you know, like if they sell their properties to someone else, that should not carry over to the new people. And they should be at the market value, whatever. And that would bring a lot more revenue to the counties. And, you know, I don't know what they say to do that, but I guess you know that that does happen, right? It's unethical. So a letter or a proclamation or a resolution, signed by everybody here on the Board of Supervisors, asking to support that revision of Proposition 13.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other speakers?
Hello. I believe I stated my name earlier.
Have you already spoken in this hearing, the budget hearing?
For the, not on this particular issue.
You spoke during public comments?
Yeah. Brandon Hudspeth. Yeah, I just wanted to talk about two things really quickly as well. I didn't really prepare to speak on anything, but after hearing a little bit more information, I felt compelled to. And so those two things are just really about smart policing and what happens when we defund public institutions. And I think it's something that we've been learning across the country, that all the data shows, that simply enforcing the laws as they are and putting people behind bars is not the same thing as public safety. We have to start rethinking the way that we treat criminals and how we're trying to solve the problems that be, including getting at things at the root. We've seen a lot of improvements in Oregon recently, which was the place I lived before I just moved here. Sentencing guidelines being changed in such a way that we aren't unnecessarily putting people behind bars, that we give them less sentences so that we're not spending tens of thousands of dollars on them. Giving them more transition services so they can have a better transition back into society and be less likely to continue committing crimes is extremely important and will save us more money down the line if we can be sure that they are not going to commit more crimes in the future. And alternatives to sentencing, and especially in regards to people who are parents, who are mothers, who get convicted a sentence for low-level crimes, who then are split off from their family, which causes consequent problems for that family, cuts off their income, when we have very clearly already got alternatives such as home supervision programs that can be strictly enforced and do the work that would be done by spending so, so much money on putting people behind bars. So this is what we call smart policing. It really is the future. And I think all of us in this room here understand that the way that we do things now of trying to be tough on crime just doesn't work. And I know all of you have heard a lot of information. So I'm trying to implore you to really look into this, to really consider how much money we can be saving taxpayers while also improving public safety and seriously addressing the roots of crime, of property crimes and the addictions that drive that sort of thing. And secondly, on public institutions, which are intimately intertwined with that, we've seen increasingly, across the United States for the last 30 or 40 years, disinvestment from public institutions, like libraries, for instance, in schools, where it's not keeping up with the population changes. But we have to also consider if we are able to increase access to things like libraries, to educational services, that that can help improve people's incomes in the future, bring more tax revenue to this body and improve the way that this body governs the area while also providing a direct alternative to being out in the streets or being in the wrong crowds. And so personally, I have used libraries growing up throughout my life as a way to have a self-haven, really a haven of self-improvement, that allowed me to get credits for community college, allowed me to escape abusive parents so that I could focus on my studies and get credits that allowed me to cut down on the massive amounts of student loans that today's young ones are incurring. As well, we have to consider just how important these jobs are for people. For myself, I had a family member who studied for six years to get a master's degree for library tech sciences, that wanted to become a librarian, that that was their goal in life. And what happened in Illinois, which is where I grew up, was a large disinvestment from those sorts of institutions. They started cutting down the amount of jobs they had available, started cutting down the amount of services, improvements to the libraries. So when my aunt, Karina, came back from New York where she studied and got these degrees and incurred so much in loans to get there, she wasn't able to find a job. And after accepting that, getting into a minimum wage job of something she didn't care about, and dealing with a lot of problems with her own personal issues, in our apartment one year, about two years after she came back, she committed suicide because she wasn't able to live her dream. And so I just hope, this is really far off, but the impact on individual people's lives that we have by not doing the right thing, by funding public institutions, drives deeper than I think we really appreciate at times when we're only looking at facts and figures of how much money we think we're wasting out there. But I hope you can listen to what the data show on smart policing, how much money we can save, and on public institutions, how much they improve the quality of life and opportunities for all people in the community. There's a lot of good ways that we can solve the problems that we have. But the biggest thing I think we've learned is that cutting taxes and cutting services isn't the solution anymore. You can look over to Kansas to see exactly how that's been done, while even the top libertarian economists who believe that that is the solution can't really uphold their argument because they've had the greatest experience and example of trying out their ideas there. And we really, really have to start considering just how much we can improve people's lives, how much we can cut down on spending money on policing and incarceration by making small investments into our community's long-term health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudspeth. I'm going to close the public comment period there. I didn't want to close the public comment period because I realized that, first of all, when we adopt our budget, it's one of the most important things that this board does, probably. I think you could argue it is the most important. It reflects our priorities. And I wanted everyone who, obviously, a lot of employees for the county are here. And I know it's difficult for you to come to our board hearings during the day. And so I wanted to give you as much time as you wanted in order to express your concerns. And I, you know, obviously, we sense that you're frustrated. But I hope that, I hope that you know that I think each and every member of the board is interested in what you said and we are, we do take it in. It's just a, it's the difficult part of our job is when we try to balance all the priorities from all the different aspects of the job that we're tasked to do. And so I'm going to ask, first of all, if any, if the members of our staff have any, anything that they would like to say in response to any of the questions that were asked, or if we want to cover some of that area tomorrow. And then I'll return to the board and ask if any board members would like to make any comments. Mr. Alsop?
Have you closed off the public hearing?
Yes, I just closed, I just said I'm going to close the public hearing there. Did you have a comment list?
Yes, I did.
Okay, well, come on up.
Thanks.
All right. Are we going to see you tomorrow, Alsop?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe that's what I was thinking.
Two different subjects, though.
Please proceed.
Tomorrow's subject is...
But you're the last speaker, though.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry. You're here too? I didn't see your hand.
I'm hiding.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll do this too. Ms. Bennett after Ms. Keogh.
Good evening, Chair Scrivner, Honorable Members of the Board, Ms. Kraus, Mr. Alsop. I am Liz Keogh, K-E-O-G-H, proud resident of the 5th District. And I am here to thank you for your continued support for the library. And the prior speaker, I thought this is a great segue. I am a member of an informal group called Friends of the Baker Street Library. Supervisor Perez is familiar with the Baker Street Library. I think you are all familiar with its historic meaning. And last year, the library was able to have that branch open two days a week instead of one, and you have continued it. If you go to that library, as I have, and see the people who are there, you know how important it is to the neighborhood. One of the things I also wanted to mention that the prior speaker touched on is in spite of the technology and the dumb phones that everybody has, there is nothing that takes the place of a real human being. I have spent hours, I'm sure you all have, looking for something on the internet. It's like trying to find a needle in a haystack. You go into the library, that librarian knows when you ask where is such and such or you want to research a particular topic, that real live person can send you directly there. So I thank you for your support for the library and I'll talk to you about doggies tomorrow.
Ms. Bennett, please come forward. Oh, yes. Well, we'll be back in less than 12 hours.
I love you too. Sue Bennett, Kern Humane Society, and president of that informal group that Liz was speaking about, Baker Library. I'm going to talk about, real quick, thank you for your support of the doggies all these years and the continuing support that you guys give to them. I'm not going to go any further into that budget. Mr. Cullen seems to be satisfied and so we are too. But the library, we're losing four people. It's, they're unfunded positions, I understand that. But it's also taking beside that was left over and there won't be any next year. So next year, 3.5%, we're looking... We're looking at Band-Aid this year, lopping off a leg next year. Watch that, be aware. You know, you can't go much further on these public institutions as they talked about. Keep it up, let us, let us keep all the things that make Kern County a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Okay. So we'll close the public comment period there and Mr. Alsop, I'll ask if you have any closing remarks.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think we'll take a shot at not trying to answer, we've written down a lot of stuff here, but trying to include a lot of this stuff in our presentation tomorrow morning, if you all don't mind. And I do want to take the opportunity, I don't know if that young lady is here anymore, but to say thank you to the employees. I try and make a point to do that. I've done it publicly several times, I think the last time we met. I've wrote a letter to all the employees recently, thanking everybody. You know, the path out of this is with all of you and so I want to make sure that you know that I'm appreciative of that and to say thank you. Also, my last name is Alsop. I have been called Asslap and Asslop and all these things all over the years, but I would prefer you all just call me Ryan going forward and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop, or Ryan. Okay. Are there any comments from members of the board? Okay, Supervisor Magrid.
Thank you. I'm grateful that the employees came tonight and the community members came tonight. It is unfortunate that we didn't have somebody here to interpret. I'll work on that. I think it's a reasonable thing to ask us to do and I'll have a conversation with Mr. Alsop about that, to make sure that we have accommodated that going forward. I know there's a lot of frustration, it's obviously clear that there's a lot of frustration. Don't, I, you know, I can't, I'm not going to sit here and defend myself, I'm not going to justify myself, I'm not going to justify the board. I don't think that serves anybody's purposes. I appreciate the role that you play and the concerns that you bring to us. We have a difficult job, we will do it, we have done it before, we will do it now and we will do it again going forward. But I don't want you to, I don't want to let a couple of things that were said go without some kind of a response. You know, we're not here to debate you tonight, we're here to listen to you tonight. That's what it was published as, that's what we're here to do and we dutifully do that. One person implied that we aren't paying attention, particularly Mr. Couch and I. Well, I have notes from fifty-four people who spoke, eleven before we went to public comment about the budget and the balance, that would be forty-three people that spoke afterwards. I have fifty-four names, I have fifty-four sets of concerns. So when people get passionate and get angry and get fired up, maybe because they haven't ever stood at that microphone before, and I know what it's like, the passion gets in you and people behind you are clapping and you think, oh, I'm making a point here, I'm going to keep making it. There are many sides to every one of these issues that we deal with. Some of you are asking us to increase public safety, some of you are asking us to put more deputies on the, on the street, some of you are asking us not to give any more money to the sheriff's department. You know, the things that are being requested of us are diametrically opposed. I appreciate Ms. Solis, who has a tremendous passion for the tragedy that's happened in our house about valley fever and making the public more aware of it. But we spend millions of dollars trying to keep one of the very best valley fever research programs in the country going at our hospital. You know, there are different aspects to these things and I, I'm not going to debate you, I'm not going to argue with you and I'm not going to sit here and justify to you, but I want you to know that, I hope it's clear from what I'm saying, that we sincerely, earnestly are interested in your input and we will try our best to weigh all those things and go forward with a decision that works. And I look forward to the day that we have weathered the four-year plan that we have, that we have sustained our financial house in such a way that we can reward our employees who are the only way that we deliver services to the people that we were elected to represent. So I'm grateful to our employees for that. Good night.
Supervisor Gleason?
Last, I just want to thank everybody for their comments. It's late. Please don't consider my lack of response this evening is any less than what it is. I, it's late, we need to go home, but we'll, I will talk tomorrow more and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for coming in. We are listening, we are hearing and we are trying our best. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. I really appreciate your passion and for being here, staying late. This is really helpful to hear from you and to, you know, encourage a dialogue that helps this board and the CAO staff and everybody else really understand the changes that are occurring within different departments, different communities. It's hard to know everything, right? It's impossible, so we really rely upon your input. Ms. Solis, we've heard from you a number of times and no one would dare ignore you, it would be foolish, but I was texting earlier with our public health director who told me that today a press release went out about the new skin test that is now officially launched for valley fever.
It's seventy-seven dollars.
I know. It's been launched, you know, with other issues that we've got to address on cost affordability, I completely agree with you, but that's exciting, we've been talking about that for about three years, it's just so underfunded and tough, but I think that's exciting. I know that some money out of the general services budget has gone to valley fever billboards, we'll get the exact number for you tomorrow, but he indicated that today, it's a different line item out of the budget, so it didn't show up immediately. But I appreciate you pushing and how passionate you are, you have a personal story. I've shared with you, my mother had valley fever before she died, had it for a couple of years, was not the cause of her death, but certainly made life miserable. And so it's personal to me too and I appreciate how consistent you are and all of your contributions and I really, really enjoy hearing from you this evening and I look forward to being able to articulate some of these matters as they relate to money tomorrow. But thank you for staying, staying late and I look forward to improving along with you. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other requests for a comment and so I'll entertain a motion adjourned to tomorrow, Tuesday, August 29th at 9:00 AM. We are adjourned.